How are you?
Good.
Feel a lot better when this is all over.
I'm particularly looking forward to this.
Oh, he has a message.
I'm prepared for this because, you know, it's going to be a...
No.
I think that's...
I think it is too.
Overwhelming.
But we've got to look like the bad guys, but I guess that's... So we get paid the big bucks.
The easy way out, I think, is to say that...
Coat for it, buddy. Yeah, real, exactly. When I say that we're gonna zone that...
That looks hard.
...that's weird.
It's a way to beat it by zero.
That's what I think about that. They see their entire investment.
There are a lot of the public, they wanted to accept the main...
Laszlo.
...associated with zero.
And I just say, listen.
That's part of that overall strategy. You don't... Nothing against the individual issue and individual... This party, you know, the fire...
Two eight good laws.
How are you doing?
That's where we found ourselves. And we were consistent. But the legislative body at today's meeting has the option to change.
I'm there at the heart. Our job is to put something in front of you that we think you asked for.
Right. Adi-dah. Yep. Exactly.
How are you? Congratulations, buddy. You're back to the budget committee.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Well, it was scary to us.
Well, you mentioned it to me.
You had your charge... Yes. Yeah, commentary. I think it was... Yeah, I love commentary.
Yep. No worries. We're talking.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
All right.
Take care of it. Absolutely.
A lot of meetings. Well, I try. Everybody does. It's just the rhetoric and the emotion.
Pardon?
National level.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah.
All righty. It's nice.
Yep.
Yeah, really.
It's kind.
Yeah.
I've had to find a balanced perspective on the last two hours.
We're gonna lose. Yeah, we're gonna lose. Nope, not anymore, Michael.
Okay.
I thought we might have 100 people here.
I know. Someone said, "I know." Second piece, you don't have...
I call the meeting to order. This is session two of London Dairy's annual town meeting. Please turn off your cell phones. And we will now have the London Dairy High School color guard. The national anthem will be sung by London Dairy High School student Meredith Leonard.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched, who were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And now we will have the pledge of allegiance led by Reed Paige Clark III.
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of all the residents of London Dairy we have lost in the past year, including John Dalryple, Bill Bouchie, and Ruth Silverman. Also, let us remember all our men and women in the armed forces protecting us around the world and those we have lost during the last year. Thank you. In case we must evacuate, there are two doors to the left and two doors to the right, plus two doors in the front of the building. The head table, starting to my left, John Michaels, Assistant Moderator; Bart Mayer, Attorney; Sue Hickey, Assistant Town Manager; Dave Karin, Town Manager; Mike Brown, Councillor; Sean O'Keefe, Vice Chair of the Town Council; Paul DiMarco, Chair; Tom Dolan, Councillor; John Farrell, Councillor; Meg Seymour, Town Clerk, Tax Collector; Margot Lapietro, Executive Secretary. The Budget Committee consists of Richard Dillon, Mark Oswald, Dan Leakey, Don Jorgensen, Todd Jonkis, John Curran, and Lisa Whittemore. Earlier this week, presentations were done at the Town Council. We would like to acknowledge Citizen of the Year, Father Bob Cudo; Volunteers of the Year, Joel Sandler; Kerry Stanley; and Maureen Pauls. We would also like to recognize for past service, Don Jorgensen and Mark Oswald of the Budget Committee; Scott Knox, Trustee of the Trust Funds; Richard Mackey, Leach Library Trustee; Peg Johnson and Sandra Weston, Elder Affairs Committee; Deb Paul and Lara McIntyre from the Heritage Commission; Cole... Excuse me, Carl Melundy and John Farrell of the Planning Board; Marilyn Hamm, Town Historian; and Councillors Mike Brown and Paul DiMarco. Thank you to all of you for the time you served. I will now go over the moderators' rules. Under the state law of New Hampshire, the moderator makes the rules for the meeting. We do not use Robert's Rules of Order or any other formal set of rules. I will announce the rules at the beginning and make rules as we go along. Any ruling of the moderator may be challenged by a majority vote if the challenge is made before the moderator moves on to the next item. All voters are required to show their voter card in order to enter the meeting. That card and the voter coupon pages of the ballot shall remain with you at all times. If you leave, take the material with you, and do not give your ballot cards to another voter. That is a felony. All amendments must be made in writing and given to me or Mr. Michaels. No more than one amendment will be allowed on the floor at any time. And if you know you're going to introduce an amendment, please bring it to the front ahead of time. All Warren articles will be brought up for discussion and a vote, and will be open to amendments. If you wish to speak, go to the microphone or raise your hand, and a mic will be brought to you. No speaking will be allowed until you're recognized and you state your name and address. If you speak more than once, you still should give us your name and address for the minutes. No personal tax or long speeches will be allowed. All those in line who have not spoken on an article or amendment will be allowed to speak unless we begin hearing the same point of view or you are a repeated speaker. If you have spoken once on a particular article and the question is moved, you will not be recognized for the second time. No running debates will be allowed. The moderator establishes the order of speaking. The usual order will be a council member or petitioner, a council... A Budget Committee member, an organized group representative, if I know ahead of time, and individuals who come to the microphone. Unless required by law, all the ballot votes at this meeting will be hand votes, which will be raised by your voter card. When five voters request a written ballot before a vote, or when seven voters request in writing a written vote after the vote is announced, but before the moderator moves on to new business, a written ballot will be taken. A written ballot will be taken by use of the alphabetical ballots that you have and will be deposited in a ballot box that we pass around. Motion to move the previous question is not debatable. Such a motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If two-thirds of the people in the hall want to discuss... Want the discussion to stop, it will, unless, as I said before, there are people in line who have not spoken and have new information to share. I will not accept a motion to move. No motions to table will be accepted. The motion limits... Motion to restrict reconsideration limits the ability of the meeting to reconsider or discuss any warrant article or vote previously taken. Our second is required, and it's debatable. The vote to restrict reconsiderate reconsideration ensures that once an action has been taken at a meeting, people can leave the meeting and not worry that a handful of people in the meeting will vote to overturn. We will allow non-voters in the hall subject to them sitting in the non-voter section. They must stay in that section, and voters do not have the right to... Non-voters do not have the right to vote. Non-voters may not speak on any issues without approval of the moderator, which normally will not be given unless the person is a town official or directly involved in the article being discussed. If you have any questions regarding the procedure of the meeting, feel free to ask. We will now go to Town Manager Dave Karin for the State of the Town.
If somebody has a black Mercedes in the parking lot, you seem to have left your door open. The license plate is 191-6971, so black Mercedes. Somebody appears to just be wanting to run the light down.
Mr. Karin.
Good morning, and thanks to all you for attending and participating in this morning's town meeting. This year's proposed operating budget is designed to maintain most of our current services. The budget reflects a 0.98% decrease in expenses over the current operating budget, and it's about $1.3 million less than a default budget. Overall, the council's budget and recommended Warren articles anticipate a level tax rate at $4.74, which results also in a reduction in headcount on the employment levels and prioritization of services and responsibilities. Unfortunately, again this year, the sluggish economy is again impacting how the town manages its budgets and prepares for the future. The recommended reductions for long-term and capital planning purposes, those Calpa Reserve and the Expendal Maintenance Trust Fund, were first introduced back in 2009. That action was necessary to address impacts upon the town budget attributable to the economy. We had planned to return to historic investment levels in these funds by FY '13. However, we have had to extend the recovery plan out to 2015 as revenues to the town remain stagnant. However, due to our partnership with the state of New Hampshire and the federal government, we have been able to complete several infrastructure projects in the past year in what is an extremely competitive bidding environment. We completed construction on Northwest Fire Station on Greenwich Field Road, in which our fire staff moved into that facility in the last week and a half. We've rebuilt intersections at Litchfield Mammoth and Pageant 28, and expanded Pillsbury Cemetery. All these projects came in at about 30% underestimated budget. We are taking further advantage of this bidding climate by improving the drop-off center at West Road, utilizing funds from the motor vehicle permit fees as authorized by the voters in 2003. Similar to last year, the town staff, elected and appointed officials continue to work very hard seeking outside sources of financial assistance for the Pettingill Road project. This project is anticipated to provide significant benefits to the community. However, it will also benefit the entire region and the state of New Hampshire. As such, we continue to interact with regional, state, and federal representatives and private property owners in an attempt to ensure that any funding package developed for the project accurately reflects anticipated benefits at all levels. Lastly, staff is completing an upgrade to the town's website, which should be completed in a couple months or late spring. A feature which we think will be of particular interest to you is E-Alert, which will allow residents and taxpayers to automatically receive as much information as you'd like, including emergency alerts, meeting agendas and minutes, road closure notifications, and similar pieces of information. We believe E-Alert will help us keep all of you better informed about the activities of your town government. On behalf of the town staff, I want to thank you for your support and assistance.
We will now go to Article Five, which reads, "To raise such funds... To raise such sums of money and make appropriations of the same as may be necessary to defray the town charges exclusive of warrant articles and increases resulting from collective bargaining agreement for the ensuing fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2012." Mr. O'Keefe? I'm sorry. Right. I don't... Okay. All right. We'll finish Five and go back to Four. Mr. O'Keefe?
I'd like to make a motion that... Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that... All right, we're on Article Five, correct? All right, we're going to... The council voted 5-0 to support the budget as proposed. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell?
Second that motion.
Mr. Karin?
Thank you. Article Five funds the operation of town government for the year beginning July 1, 2011, such as public safety, public works, recreation, tax collection and administration, debt service payments, general assistance, planning and economic development. The FY '12 budget represents a $255,000 decrease over the current budget, and is approximately $1.3 million less than what a default budget would be. At present, the budget includes the elimination of five full-time positions, elimination of 10 part-time positions, and a reduction of three full-time positions to part-time. Estimated revenues have also decreased with lower amounts anticipated for motor vehicle permit fees, interest on income, and building permit fees.
Thank you. Mr. Curran?
Thank you. The Budget Committee supported the proposed budget submitted to us by unanimous vote 7-0.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Curran?
Do you need a mic? I usually don't need one. Call it out. I'm here today for a couple of general questions on the budget development, and then I have a motion for the general operating budget. First of all, I'd say that I never thought I would see the day when the tax rate comes before public safety and our leaders, but today might be the day. My motion here, and I have a slide I'll put up for you. My motion is to put back $460,000 in the general fund. This is the... This is due to the fact that at the last minute... No offense to the Town Council, they got this at $11,000, like all of us. The governor's plan at the moment is to not put back or not fund reimbursement to the police and fire retirement, which is usually a 35% reimbursement. A little history, and then I'll go into the impact of what this does. Since I've been here, since I've been a town official and lived here, the state has reimbursed the town for police and fire retirement, and the school boards for the teacher retirement at the rate of 35%. Two years ago, they adjusted that to 30, and they told us it was going to 25 the following year, and budgets were adjusted appropriately. They also told us that this year, FY '12, that rate would go back to 35%. Some of us took the state for its word, some of us left their budget at 25% reimbursement. But I'm pretty safe when I say that nobody in the state, and if I'm wrong, Dave will correct me, nobody thought that the state would go to zero. That decision by the state, as it sits today, puts a $460,000 hole in the budget. Now, some people, when they look at a budget, they look at a number of taxes to be raised and charged to people. I look at a budget as the cost of level of services and programs the community has asked for and requires, and then class it out, comes to a tax rate and a tax bill. If you look at it this way, if the budget is not... If this amendment is not passed, then $460,000 of benefits... I'm sorry, $460,000 of programs, quality of services, are reduced in order to stay within the budget. That's how I'm looking at it. What are the impacts? Well, the town manager passed out a memo to the council on Monday night, and the impacts are as follows. In the police side, and all the impacts, as I understand it, our police and fire, that's where the reimbursement through retirement system comes from. On the police, they're losing four sworn officers, including the SRO. On the fire side, their minimum staffing would go to eight or even seven. What does that mean? That means you cannot staff three fire stations with eight or seven, but it's simply a fire station will be closed. I'm not here, I'm one person of whatever. I'm not ready to close a fire station as yet. So I ask that you put the 460 back and allow us to have three fire stations and keep the four sworn officers. If, if, the governor's budget changes and the money comes back, there are ways to adjust it through financial tools so that we don't double tax, so to speak, and we go on it with the services that were in the current budget. I'm just not ready to close a fire station, especially when we have 24,000 people, a power plant, urgent care, an airport, 1,300 more residences on the planning board, two hotels, and whatever else coming on board. So I ask you for your support of this.
Do I have a second? Okay, Ms. Gaffney?
I'll put this right here.
Thank you. Okay. We are voting on the amendment, which is to raise and appropriate an additional $460,000 to offset the decision regarding the reimbursement of retirement from the state. If any funds are returned from the state, the town may freeze such sum and return funds to the year-end fund balance. Okay, all those in...
Is there a public comment? Is there a comment on this, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I represent Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. I just want to talk on, and I respect their... What was just said on safety. I want you to keep in mind, the governor's budget and what was said on the State of the Union is basically talk, okay? That budget does not belong to the governor no more. It is in the hands of the House and the Senate. We are working... We're determined not to cost shift. Now, will there be a little cost down? It's possible. We can't make any promises. But this here is a guessing game right now, that you want to take 14 more cents, add it to the budget, and then hope for the best and say we can correct it. I doubt we can correct it. Once the tax rate is put in place, that's it. End of discussion, and then we move on. And if I... Maybe the town manager can speak on that. But we're going to do everything we can at the state level to not cost shift. We've already been putting out memos and other things out there saying that this is being worked on. So please, don't listen to what the governor said. He has no control anymore over all the cost shifting that's gone on in the last four years, and we're going to do our determination to fix this one way or another. There's a link.
Let's go to Mr. O'Keefe, and you need him...
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just so everyone's aware, I don't know if you were able to catch any of the meeting we had the other night. The council was made aware of the shortfall from the governor's proposed budget. Pretty much what happened now is we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode. To... I understand why Mr. Curran was making his motion, but having a little bit more insight into the budget, we really are kind of jumping to a conclusion that it's going to happen. Something that the town manager had recommended that we consider is have the ability to have a special town meeting if we need that. And, you know, this is... Me speaking as one councillor, I think that it would be much more prudent to do that than to jump to conclusions and support going out right now and trying to add to the budget. We're already facing a... You know, we're facing an increase on the tax side for the schools...
that were in the current budget. I'm just not ready to close a fire station, especially when we have 24,000 people, a power plant, urgent care, an airport, 1,300 more residences on the planning board, two hotels, and whatever else coming onboard. So I ask you if you support it or not.
Do I have a second? Okay, Ms. Gaffney? Thank you. Okay. We are voting on the amendment, which is to raise and appropriate an additional $460,000 to offset the decision regarding the reimbursement of retirement from the state. If any funds are returned from the state, the town may freeze such sum and return funds to the year-end fund balance. Okay, all those in...
Is there a public comment? Is there a comment on this, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I represent Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road. I just want to talk on, and I respect what was just said on safety. I want you to keep in mind, the governor's budget and what was said on the State of the Union is basically talk. Okay, that budget does not belong to the governor no more. It is in the hands of the House and the Senate. We are working... We're determined not to cost shift. Now, will there be a little cost down? It's possible. We can't make any promises. But this here is a guessing game right now, that you want to take 14 more cents, add it to the budget, and then hope for the best and say, "We can correct it." I doubt we can correct it. Once the tax rate is put in place, that's it. End of discussion, and then we move on. Maybe the town manager can speak on that. But we're going to do everything we can at the state level to not cost shift. We've already been putting out memos and other things out there saying that this is being worked on. So please, don't listen to what the governor said. He has no control anymore over all the cost shifting that's gone on in the last four years, and we're going to do our determination to fix this one way or another.
Let's go to Mr. O'Keefe, and you need a... If you can...
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just so everyone's aware, I don't know if you were able to catch any of the meeting we had the other night. The council was made aware of the shortfall from the governor's proposed budget. Pretty much what happened now is, we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode. I understand why Mr. Currow was making his motion, but having a little bit more insight into the budget, we really are kind of jumping to a conclusion that it's going to happen. Something that the town manager had recommended that we consider is have the ability to have a special town meeting if we need that. And, you know, this is... Me speaking as one counselor, I think that it would be much more prudent to do that than to jump to conclusions and support going out right now and trying to add to the budget. We're already facing a... You know, we're facing an increase on the tax side for the schools to try to maintain the service level we have there. And I think to add money to the budget right now would be kind of fiscally irresponsible because there are a lot of residents out there that are feeling this pain right now. So, as far as closing a fire station, that's not going to happen. Either way, we'll find the money, we'll make things work, because that's what we're here for. Public safety is the first, and it's the first priority that this council has, and everything else falls in line after that. So, all I'm trying to tell you, and this is just as me as one counselor, and I'm sure you're going to hear from other councils as we go here, it's presumptuous at best that we're going to get an increase from the governor's office and the state. So, all I ask you is that you consider that. We can look to it. If it does happen down the road, we can look at a special town meeting, and if we have to vote to raise funds then, then we have to put that on the table then. Or, the council looks to do it other ways as far as restructuring some of the other services we offer in town. So, that's just what I'd like to say. Thank you.
All right, maybe it wasn't too clear. You can only go by the information that you have today, and we're voting today. Today, we are looking at a $460,000 hole. Okay? The memo that was given to the town manager says, from the fire chief himself, if this passes and the 460 is out of the budget, if everything stays where it is, he will have to go to eight or seven minimum staffing, and a fire station will be closed. I agree, Mr. O'Keefe, I don't want a special town meeting. Okay? There are ways. There are ways that you can address this issue without going to a special town meeting, if the funds come back. If the funds come back. Okay, so in effect, we've added 460 to the budget, just for discussion. Okay? You can use, as I mentioned in the memo, you freeze 460, so you require the town manager to return on June 30, 2012, $460,000. Okay? Which is the money that you got. You then, when we set the tax rate in October, the finance director, when we set the tax rate, puts 460 of fund balance in. Okay? That reduces your tax rate to where it is now. So on June 30 of 2012, by freezing 460, the fund balance account gets it all back. That keeps benefits where you asked it to be, based on this budget. It addresses the 460, and it keeps everything where it is. If you get half of it, you adjust it the same way. That avoids a special town meeting, which I don't think I want either. But I want... But I'm not in favor of closing a fire station, and that's the memo that came out. So, I'm addressing, if the budget comes back and the 460 comes back, there are ways to address it, so the tax rate is adjusted appropriately without going to a special town meeting. I'm going on today's information. I'm going on the memo that was given to the council by the town manager.
Mr. LeBrew?
Yeah, Robert LeBrew, 76 Hall Road. You know, the budget, $25 million, whatever it is, $27 million, is composed of a lot of assumptions and suppositions, and that's what our elected officials have to do. That's what our Budget Committee has to do. Somebody has to take an educated, I won't say guess, but look at historical data, say, "Okay, we anticipate 15 snow removal events. We anticipate gasoline to be $4 a gallon next fiscal year. We expect electricity to be 13.5 cents per kilowatt hour." They make these assumptions, and they have to adjust accordingly. Now, if we crafted a budget that took into consideration every possible contingency, such as the state downshifting funds, we'd have a budget that's blown all out of proportion. Mr. Currow indicates that there's... He thinks there's a method to recapture that money if, in fact, we appropriate it. Well, I submit to you, as Counselor O'Keefe did, that there's mechanisms in place to supplement the budget if need be. I think it's a bad idea to try and increase the budget at this point in time on an uncertain future. Here through the grapevine, our elected officials in Concord are looking to remedy this very problem, and I recommend we vote against increasing the budget. Vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeMarco?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Another component of the memo from the town manager for our Monday meeting, which was publicly available, which wasn't mentioned, was that we expect a $100,000 savings in health costs, and then that would be a way to help mitigate the potential for the increase or the decrease in the state's subsidy. So that was actually included in the town manager's memo to us. So the amount was actually 100,000 less than what is being proposed here. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just like to address the crowd. It's not easy to answer this question briefly, but I'll try to be as concise as possible because we're at the end of a multi-month process of why the budget that's before you is before you versus five minutes of a presentation on the spot. So, in all deference and respect to Peter's opening remarks about he thought he'd never see the day when a council would put public safety below other things, that's entirely incorrect, and I kind of wish he hadn't implied that to you folks. Because the nine, the five and seven, the 12 elected officials who voted to support this budget, and they'll speak for themselves in no way, shape, or form, put public safety behind anything else. That is incorrect. What we did is we provided a goal to our employee, the town manager, to come back with a budget, working with his department heads, that resulted in no more tax increase on the town tax side than the previous year. That was our goal. We mapped a budget to that. The council doesn't sit there and say, "Take money from that department, take money from that department," which is what the implication was. The chiefs of those two departments, the police chief and fire chief, offered up to the council through the town manager, "This is how we think we can handle the flat tax rate." They offered up what they thought was a viable way to meet that goal and still ensure public safety. That's what's real here today, folks, not what you heard here a minute ago. Okay? Secondly, the $460,000 retirement, it is a proposed budget. Everyone's intelligent here. It's proposed. The governor threw it up, we're all scrambling, but nothing's in stone. You're not voting on a proposed budget for the governor today. Not at all. Okay? The state representative, Mr. Baldassaro, said they're going to be working on it. They'll come back to us with it. We did the right thing and had our employee go back and say, "If this came to fruition, Dave, what would you... How would you guys handle it?" He went back to his police chief and fire chief. This is what they said. The important thing here is, that's a memo. We can completely disregard that memo. He works for us. We can say, "Sorry, you're not closing anything. Sorry, you're not reducing public safety any further." The next council can say, "Find it elsewhere, boys." And that's the way it works. This, what you heard here from Peter, is not a done deal. It's not a fait accompli. It's yet to be discussed. Okay? It's a policy decision that the future council would make, and if I were still there, which I'm not going to be, thank God, that's what I would... That's what I would... That's exactly what I would tell those guys. "You're not doing that. Find it somewhere else." That's what you're voting on today. A budget that was crafted with public safety in mind, developed by the two public safety chiefs in this town. It's a responsible budget unanimously supported by people you elected to do this work. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just so that we're clear, I will still be here, and I don't support the memo. And I think we need to look at different ways, nor do I support this amendment. Thank you.
Gene Jastrom, 19 Horseshoe Lane. Question I have for the representative, do you have any plan? Preliminary plans for the short come on this? Because this, if we're going to be voting on a budget today, the snapshots today. If you've got preliminary plans, that's one thing. The other thing is the fact of the matter, if we got $400,000 deficit, then I'm going to ask, Mr. Karen, can we actually really make it up in the budget? Or, do we have to have a special town meeting, and we have to do something today? That's what I'm trying to base my decision off of. Do we have room to be able to maneuver to make sure the services stay? Or, do we have a mechanism in place that we're going to be able to have a special town meeting? Because right now, through the laws, there's no provision, correct? So, I mean, there's some questions to both individuals, but, I mean, this is going to affect a lot of people.
Well, just let me briefly lay out the options I presented to the council last week. As one is raise money today, which I recommend is premature because we just don't know what the impact is. It's just premature at this point to ask the citizens to pay more tax dollars when, in fact, they may not be needed. The second option is to consider a special town meeting, which would require the town petition Superior Court, or legislature could authorize during this session that towns be allowed to call a special town meeting, similar to what they did two years ago when all the ARo funds were coming in. And the third one is essentially to reduce some level of services to absorb the budget. See, we have a bottom-line budget.
I understand that.
So, we... Once you folks vote today, that's a limit of our expenditure. We could find $10 million from grant source. We can't add to our bottom-line budget.
That's my concern.
So, we'll have to make... So if options one and two are not embraced, we'll have to look at cutting some degree of services somewhere to absorb that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Greg Warner from 10 Pendleton Lane, and thank you for your time. I vote I would like to support this amendment to include the $460,000 in our budget to avoid the possibility of losing either the services of our police department or fire department and possibly cutting other town services from an already extremely tight budget. Now, if the machinations of our outstanding legislature actually do decide to provide this 35% or whatever funding for this particular item, that would be fine. The money would already be in the town budget, and if not spent on this, it could either be used to enhance town services or carried over into next year. So, ladies and gentlemen, I suggest that we vote yes on this amendment in order to give our public servants enough money to do their work and to avoid losing any of them to other towns. Thank you for your time.
Ann Gaffney, 28 Tokenell Drive. Since we can't automatically have a special town meeting, and since all of you have done an outstanding job of cutting any bit of... I won't even call it fat, because I don't feel like there was fat there to begin with, but every bit of anything from the budget that you could cut, I am concerned when faced with a possible situation that would remove such a large chunk of change from our budget. Because I believe that if there was money there where you could finagle and have it be acceptable to our town services, you would have done so already. And because of that, I'm reminded of the Boy Scout motto, "Be prepared." I want to be prepared in case the governor's budget does pass. Now, I know that Al will talk a lot in Concord to try and keep the governor's budget from passing. I believe that, you know, and our other representatives as well. But, I don't know how that's going to go. And so, the only thing I feel that I can do right now is try and make sure that I and other taxpayers in Londonary provide to our council the money that they felt they needed when they created the budget. Because when they created the budget, they said, "This is the level of services we're willing to accept." And so, I always question when a change is made later, and then people say, "Oh, oh, no, 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 we can make it up," whether that really is... Whether that's really... If they meant it, then why didn't they say it before? You know, so I feel like you must have felt like this was a good level before. And I trust that and believe that. And so, I want to make sure you have those funds. So, I think we need to support this, even though I don't want the tax rate to go up. Thank you.
Madeline DeMule, Boyd Road, Londonary. I also agree with Ann. I am really concerned. I watch very carefully the budget on the town and school side every year for the last 20 years, and I don't see a lot of leeway in the budget. In terms of hundreds of thousands of dollars, that always looks like personnel to me. I would really like to hear directly from the police and fire chief about what they actually would intend to do, and also from the council, where that money would come from, if it's not going to come from police and fire. Eliminating an SRO and lowering the staffing of the fire department is, to me, life safety, and I am very concerned. I think depending on a town meeting, an extra-town meeting, an additional-town meeting is also kind of a frightening concept because I'm not sure that that would actually come into fruition and that people would vote for it. There's a lot of fear about the economy right now. It's justified. But I think that the town council, the Budget Committee, the department heads have done an exceptional job of keeping things as low as possible to not hurt the citizens of Londonary and still provide services. I'd really like to hear from the police and fire department about what other things they would cut, or if that really is the only option they see. Because it seems to me that the majority of funding is always in salaries. Thank you.
Chief Hart? Yes.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone, for coming out here. I'm Bill Hart. I'm the chief of police. Let me tell you what the current budget does, and then let me tell you what my recommendation to the town manager pursuant to his request was. This year, with the goal given by the council, we went from 45 officers to 43 officers, so a reduction in force of two. We reduced the school resource program by one officer, excuse me, and we're preparing for a very limited animal control program. With all due respect to whatever the opinions are, given the growth of this town, given the growth that we expect, and given that a uniformed officer in a marked patrol unit is the most effective crime deterrent we have, it seems to me that a reduction in officers is not my recommendation either now or going forward. Let me address the situation proposed by the governor, which I concur, from what I understand, is a proposal at this point, subject to being worked on by the members of the legislature and the Senate. We expect that should that come to fruition in total, we will further reduce the police department by three officers, bring our force to 40 this year. That will be the lowest number since 1989. Those of you who watched the meeting on Monday past realize that burglaries are up some 60% to 70% this year. Serious crime is up. I don't say this to be alarmist or to be use, you know, frightening scare tactics. These are the facts. I encourage you to make the best judgment that you can as the legislative body for this town. And if anybody has any questions, I'm delighted to respond.
Good morning, all, and thank you for coming. My name is Kevin McCaffrey. I'm the fire chief, and I will echo Bill's sentiments on how we got to be where we are. We took it seriously as to do what the town council asked us to do, to come up with a budget that would basically keep minimum services to the residents in this community. In doing so, it still cut personnel from the fire department. We lost the fire prevention division by one personnel. We also reduced the overtime budget, which is basically staffing for those people that take time off, which they're entitled to by the contract. Should the governor's budget come through, that will mean us reducing that overtime budget significantly to the point where we will not be backfilling those positions as those people leave. And in doing so, when we get to the eight number, it's not feasible to be able to staff a station. And that will be considered when that gets to that level. That's where we are at the present time, or will be should that budget pass. The whole idea is to maintain the best service we can with what is given us to do.
Mr. O'Keefe?
With all due respect, the council, I can guarantee you, will not let that happen. So that scenario is not on the table. Again, I will repeat, it is not on the table.
Mr. LeBrew, I'm going to take...
Just, if you'll indulge me, just one quick question directed to the town manager.
Okay.
I ask it every year, and I always forget. It changes anyways. For your proposed fiscal year 2012 operating budget, how many dollars... For your proposed fiscal year 2012 operating budget, how many dollars represent one penny on the tax rate?
Uh, $34,000.
$34,000, thank you.
Reed Clark, Stonehenge Road. Notwithstanding all the comments that were made by the council and by the person, the, people who represent us behind me, I believe that I want all the services I can get right now. And we can give them back later if we want to, but right now, I don't want any kind of lowering despite what Mr. O'Keefe says. It may come to that. So, please, keep them up. At my age, I may not be around to get the receipts back next year, but I still would like to have them guaranteed this year. Thank you.
Quickly, Mr. Baldessaro.
I'm up as a state representative, not as a resident here to give some answers, and Representative McKinney is right behind me. I was trying, while I was standing here, trying to find the law that we're either going to be voting on that's in our calendar. We've got about 150, 175, uh, bills that we're going to be voting on-
To the point.
-this week. Now, one of the bills is, I can't remember if it's 576 or 590, somewhere around there. It's going to give the town, the, the schools, the authority to hold a special election without going through the courts requesting it. So, we're looking at that. And then, of course, some of the retirement bills have been retained, and Representative McKinney could probably talk a little bit more. So, I want to make sure that we understand on this here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKinney?
Betsy McKinney, Leland Circle. Uh, I have two points. One is the, is the former rep, the representative before we mentioned. All we have is the governor's budget so far that he presented a month ago, and the governor's budget is his idea. I don't think what you've heard and read about is going to be the final budget, but the problem is you won't know the final budget until June. But I don't think that the representatives or the senators are going to go through the, approve of something of the draconian, because after all, we come from cities and towns, and we all have the same problems. So, I don't think you're going to see that. You're going to see a lot of reforms with, um, with the retirement system and sort of have to stay tuned. But the other thing I'd like to say, and the thing that's important to this meeting, is that you're talking about approximately $350,000. Excuse me. And the $350,000, while is a daunting amount, it is not that much on a $25 million budget. Furthermore, if you turn to your town report on page 93 and 94, you'll see the fund balance for the last 10 years has ranged around 200, 2 million, 2 and 1/2 million, approximately 11% of the budget. And that's what that fund balance is there for. It's for emergencies. In other words, if a roof should cave in on the fire station and there's not money in the budget and you have to replace it, then you have to come out of the, come up with the money, and the money comes out of fund balance. So, I think there's plenty of money here in fund balance to cover this shortage if it should come about. And knock on wood and cross your fingers, I don't think it's going to be as draconian as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swingsors?
Just Mrs. Sors.
Okay.
Uh, Mary Sors, Tugail Road. Um, I, I agree with Betsy McKinney. I think that you have a place where you can go to in order to get these funds so that you don't have to raise the budget or... What frustrates me, however, I mean, I want to say two things. You don't want to always say, "Oh, well, we have the fund balance, so let's just go to that," because then you don't have the fund balance, and you're not going to be able to go to that. But when you have something like this where the governor comes, proposes a budget after we've already made our decisions on our, on our, on your recommendations, then that's when you do use that. So, having said that, what frustrates me most as a towns person in here is that when there is something like this, the first place that you look at are our police and our fire. So that you will have people coming up to the, um, to the microphone and saying things like this. Um, that, you know, the, the frustrating thing is, on the school side, we did cut teachers because we have a declining population. There was a legitimate reason for us to cut those teachers. On the town side, we don't have a declining population. We still have the same number of people who need the same number of services. So, to say that you're going to cut police officers or firefighters is, you know, is not doing your due diligence to our town. Thank you.
Ms. Paul?
Um, hi. Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. Um, like the other two speakers, I totally agree. I would like to know if there are any other departments. Why is it always fire and police first, then it's library and the access center? Because you get this motivation, because you can get people to open up their purses? I want to know what other departments have been seriously looked at, or other alternatives have been seriously looked at to cut and find these monies. Thank you. Are you going to answer me? I'm sorry, Mike.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, the current council, which I'm still a member of, received a memo from the town manager and what his department heads would propose. We did not say cut police and fire. I don't know how many times we're going to have to say this today. Bear with me.
Okay.
Speaker after speaker is saying the council's looking at cutting police and fire. We're not. We received a piece of paper from our employee that said, "This is the way we would handle it," through the department heads. It then becomes a policy decision. That's what you elected these people to do and those people to do. The previous policy, policy decision in developing this budget was from the police chief, eliminate the SROs. Let me finish. We said, "No. Put one back in." So, the town council is not jumping at the bit to cut police and fire.
So, I want to know why, then, wasn't the council questioning the town manager or going back to him and saying, "Is this all you've got? Are there no other places? Can we not close the town hall for one day a week? Can we cut, merge school HR? Are there other departments that can go differently that aren't going to affect the citizens as much?" And I'm not blaming you, and I'm not saying it. I'm just saying that we elect you to instruct Mr. Karen to do his job, and he is not telling you how to do your job. And that's where I feel the disconnect is, and I just wish that you guys would be a little stronger. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I can only speak as one individual, and we have an elected budget committee here as well, but I do believe the fact that I physically sat through these meetings, we did just that. We did question the town manager and question the department heads, and I'm kind of hoping a budget committee member will jump in here and say, "Yeah, we did that." And, uh, we did vet all of those decisions to an extreme degree. In fact, in my six years of doing this, this is the first time I think we really did a good job on the budget by asking questions and forcing the town manager to come back to us with other options. He's come back to us with multiple options. This memo is his first cut at what would happen if the but, the governor's budget went through. So, we're spending a lot of time talking on that because of Peter's amendment, but I can tell you as one individual, and I'm going to stop talking here, that we did do exactly what Deb was saying that we should have done. It may not have been apparent if you didn't watch or come to every meeting, but we did that, and I know the budget committee did that as well, uh, to a great degree.
Mr. Johnkis?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Um, when the budget committee voted on this budget, it was prior to the shortfall, obviously. Um, and, and I can tell you that there were a lot of discussions in support of what Mr. Brown has just stated. Uh, I can guarantee you that myself, as one budget committee member, would never have voted if, in fact, it meant closing a fire station or something to that effect, uh, because there was extensive discussion around, uh, to what extent we could or may be able to cut here or there. So, a prudent person would may say on one side of the equation that, in fact, uh, let's be prepared, and I've heard a lot of that, so put it back in. Uh, on the other side, I'm hearing that, in fact, nobody up here supports cutting fire. Nobody wants to close, and nobody, and I haven't heard anybody, uh, commit, and I would fight tooth and nail before we'd ever see a south fire station or a fire station, uh, close. So, I, I would say that, uh, we should support the budget at this line item with the caveat that, in fact, it, we have, uh, the, the, um, support of, of our elected officials to not, in fact, cut the way that this memo may have indicated. And, and everything I'm hearing is, that's, in fact, what would happen is, they would not cut what people are afraid they would cut. So, um, with that in mind, you know, vote as you see fit, but, um, just keep that in mind, that everybody up here went through the due diligence, and in no way whatsoever were we prepared to take it to that extent. And I would guarantee you that this budget committee member will fight tooth and nail to make sure that that, in fact, never happens. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, as the school board liaison from the council, I can tell you that we've had extensive conversations with the school department to try to consolidate services. Uh, we've yet to be able to find where we can do that, but those conversations continue. With regards to the operation of town hall or other services, within the collective bargaining agreements with the employees, hours are specified. We can negotiate those in the future, but those contracts are in place. In order to change hours, both sides have to be willing to negotiate. This side is willing to negotiate.
Good morning. Adam Johnson, 9 Rebecca Drive. Um, basically, all I just wanted to say is, we seem to be, we've spent about 45 minutes now talking about a proposed budget by the governor that nothing is in, we're hearing from everybody that nothing is in stone. We don't know, and that's how budgeting works. We could change, everything could change, but we have to set some level of budget. I'm hearing from the town council that they do not expect to cut these services, where it really depends on how you want to prepare for this. We're not going to get money back. I, I think the idea that they say, "Well, we'll move money around," is, is laughable. I've never seen taxes, tax money come back to me. Once it leaves, it's gone. Um, so, we have to decide if we want to, do we want, do we want to vote on this today and add this money, or, or find out what's actually going to happen and make a decision when we actually know what's going on? I'm hearing from town council, they're not going to let these cuts go through. I, I'm going to vote no on this issue as it currently stands. Thank you very much.
Could we have your name again, please?
Sure. Adam Johnson, 9 Rebecca Drive.
Madam Moderator, I vote to move the question.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the question signify by raising your card. All those against moving the question? Okay, the question is moved.
Yeah. Now, I was thinking, well, can I make a motion that if the House votes out of the right?
You've done that.
Yeah.
We have a secret, a request for a paper ballot if Al Baldessaro, Michael Brown, Joe Green, Tom Frieder, Thomas Dalton, Pauline Karen, Brian Farmer, and Glenn Douglas would stand. Okay, secret ballot. We are voting on the amendment. The amendment says to raise and appropriate an additional $460,000 to offset the decision regarding the reimbursement of retirement from the state. If any funds are returned from the state, the town may freeze such sum and return funds to year-end fund balance. We will use ballot A. Could I have my ballot clerks, please?
Ballot clerk. (laughing).
The ballot boxes are going to be passed around, and, um, we're going to continue with the meeting while, uh, while we vote.
Should she goes to four? Sean, can you second this motion?
Sure.
Should we go to four? Um, we have a second amendment. Ms.-
Moderator?
On what?
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Dolan?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that while the, the ballots are being counted, that we take up Article Four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we will go to Article Four. Article Four reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of $200,000 to be placed in the town's maintenance fund created by the voters at the 2003 town meeting for the purpose of repairing and maintaining town facilities and to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance in the amount of $135,000 towards this appropriation." Mr. Dolan?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we move the article as read. The town council supported this Article 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to second that.
Mr. Karen?
The Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund is used to maintain our town facilities, such as repairing HVAC, plumbing, and electrical systems in various buildings, purchase of equipment for the recreation division, such as bleachers and lighting, replacing the roof on Leach Library, and improvements at the highway garage. As I mentioned, uh, a while back, is that we reduced our appropriation and used more fund balance beginning in 2009 due to the economy, and, uh, this request represents another phase of a multi-year plan to restore funding to appropriate levels.
Thank you. Ms. Whittabore?
Madam Moderator, the budget committee believes that the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund is an accept, an effective method of allowing us to be prepared for maintenance issues on our town facilities. Because of this fund, we are able to deal responsibly and methodically with repairs on both anticipated and unanticipated. The budget committee was unanimous in its support of this article, and the vote was seven to zero.
Thank you. Discussion from the town council? Budget? Mr. Young?
Steve Young, 7 Fiddler's Ridge Road. Uh, my question on this article is, um, I believe it's very prudent. We've used it in the school district for years. Uh, however, I'm confused with the inclusion of salary amounts in the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund. I don't believe that that is prudent.
Thank you.
Has everybody voted? Has everybody voted?
Okay.
Last call.
Any further discussion on Article Four? How is the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund used for employees or salaries?
We have one position at town hall, which is, uh, responsible for verity, variety of responsibilities. Uh, it's a part-time position, and we've allocated 1/3 of the expenses for that position to the trust fund, since he spends about 1/3 of his time, either coordinating the repair of buildings or actually repairing the building himself.
Okay, and I forgot to give my name?
Yes.
It's Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road.
Thank you.
Um, can't that person's salary be taken out of your office?
It originally was, and because of the budget direction this year, we had to, uh, transfer money and reduce expenses.
Well, I think that that salary should not be taken out of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, and it should be placed in another department if your department can't take care of it.
Jim Butler, 57 Mammoth Road. Uh, I see a line item here for the library replacement of the roof. Uh, I'm curious to see, how old is the library? Do you know? Pauline?
I'm not sure, but I think it's about 16 years old.
16 years old. All right, okay. Uh, I had the opportunity to go over there, and there seems to be, uh, some debate concerning whether or not there's defective materials on that roof, and whether or not the installer actually, uh, installed the materials in accordance with the manufacturer's direction. Has the town, uh, brought in the, uh, manufacturer's rep, and not a distributor's rep, a manufacturer's rep, to see if we can get some type of consensus on what's happened here? And if we have, and there is a problem with defective shingles or improper installation, have we gone to our lawyers to see whether or not we can recover some of those funds from the, from the installer?
Mr. Karen?
What we've learned is that when the addition was put on the library, there was inadequate ventilation, and they used OCB on the roof as opposed to plywood. So, there's a moisture problem which is causing the, uh, roof nails to pop out and the shingles to slide down, but those two alternatives, which you mentioned, are ones we're currently investigating. Manufacturers, any legal ramifications may have.
And do we have any type of number or cost associated to, uh, remedying this problem?
We don't at this point. Uh, essentially, what we'll have to do is just re-prioritize our, our, uh, our project for next year to make sure that project is taken care of.
And when the, uh, uh, library was built, we, we had a problem with the ventilation system? Is that ventil- that ventilation system the system that was appropriate for that building?
It's the venting for the roof, not the actual HVAC system.
Oh, venting on the roof. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to make a statement with reference to the library roof. Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. When that building was constructed, there was a clerk of the works hired to oversee the construction, and there was a town building inspector that was supposed to have inspected everything. So, if those items were not taken care of at that time, we can't say that it's defective equipment. It's defective installation and not overseen by the proper people, the clerk of the works and the town building inspector. Thank you.
Anne Gaffney, 28 Tokenell Drive. I also am a bit uncomfortable about seeing costs for overseeing the maintenance fund in the maintenance fund. To me, it sort of seems like the cost of the replacement itself. So, from what I'm hearing, I think I'd like to make a motion to, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I don't want the amount to go down necessarily because I think $200,000 is this nice round number that we put in every year and we save it for these things. But is there some procedure where we can say as a body to you, like, "Please don't take this money out of this fund"? Does it need a motion? Does it, what do I need to do? So, I would like to make a motion to remove the $16,000 for administrative expenses and labor costs from the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund proposed list.
Do you put that in writing?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Will I have a second before I bother to write it down? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Can you write it so I can read it, Anne, please? Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. It's a bottom-line budget, so you can't remove one person's salary from the budget. So, you should vote no.
Hi, Robert LeBrew, 76 Hall Road. I'm not prepared to address the amendment, but I'd like to speak to the article. In looking it over, it kind of makes sense, you know, keep your stuff maintained, your buildings and your facilities. Most of it's in the $12,000 to $20,000 range. There's one item for over $100,000 for improvements to the highway garage, and I'd like a little more detail on what that $103,000 is going to buy.
Okay.
I can give you a general overview, and I'll look to Yanos to provide specifics, but whoever's been to the highway garage will recognize it's in pretty bad shape. So, what we've been able to do is attempt to phase in improvements every year through use of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund. You should know, though, that our phasing is depending upon other projects in town. For example, that's the area in which the library roof will be paid for, so any kind of planned improvements this year will be reduced by the amount that we need to replace a roof. Yanos, do you have any additional information as to what the phases are?
Okay. Next. Do you, okay, hold one moment. Yanos?
Hi, Yanos Trzuszkiewicz. I'm Director of Public Works and Engineering. In 2006, we proposed a plan to do improvements to our highway garage facilities. I would welcome anybody to come and see our facilities and our garage. We constructed a salt shed according to our requirements, so we do not, the salt has to be covered. Also, we proposed to do the improvements in phases to avoid asking for large bond. We knew they will not get a $2 million or $3 million bond to do the improvements to the garage. We spent around $230,000 to build a shed. This year, we will be improving the driveway. Our own driveway, like Schumacher walks without shoes or broken shoes, our own driveway is falling apart to the point that trucks cannot go there. We have to improve this. Our garage has to be improved inside, and we are planning to build in phases again, kind of type of lean tool to the existing garage, and slowly, when the money is available, to do these improvements. That's how we are trying to do that, and we are breaking this to subphases.
Thank you. Mr. DeMarco?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, during the budget hearings, the town manager did bring up that he was going to fund one-third of this particular part-time position, and I'm only speaking as one counselor, not for the whole counselor, but the way I understood that, it made sense to me that if he had to hire somebody, a contractor, to do the same work that this individual is doing, it would come out of the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund. So, to me, it made sense to me. It was someone who was there in the, in town hall who could react to something as simple as changing a light bulb to something more complicated like climbing on the roof of the library. So, to me, I agreed with that, and I still do at this point. I don't think it's necessary to remove that from the, from the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And as a follow-up to what Counselor DeMarco just said, if we were to remove this because of, I think this is a discussion of classification of expense, if we believe that, that a salary expense or a third of a salary expense is inappropriate to come from this trust fund, then it would be appropriate to move that expense to the general operating budget. So, I would, if this were to pass, I will be making a motion to amend the operating budget by sixteen-five to put it in the right place, if that's, if that's what the legislative body sees so fit to do.
Hi, Barb Stat Miller, Cresty Circle, and I will admit, it's been a few years since I've been to a town meeting. But as far as I was aware, when we look at each article one at a time, we're really only focused on the language in the article, and all I see here is that we are looking to raise and appropriate some money to put into the fund, that at this point, we couldn't put any more language into this, especially without speaking to the DRA. So, I don't know if the town counselor, council can speak to us about this, the attorney would step up, but I'm concerned that if we try to amend this article, that we're going to end up writing something that's not enforceable by law, and I would almost suggest that we focus on this first. I think there's a lot of other discussion going on that's useful, but not necessarily related to what we're looking at with Article Four. But maybe you could speak to that in case I'm missing something.
Thank you. Mr. LeBrew?
Yeah, Robert LeBrew, 76 Hall Road. Incidentally, I think Expendable Maintenance Trust Funds are an excellent tool for maintaining a stable level tax rate as opposed to peaks and valleys as the years go by. I'm all in favor of Article Four. I'd like to take up Yanos on his offer of come and see the facility, but every time I go by there at the turn-in for the driveway, there's these big signs, "Keep out, authorized personnel only, no trespassing." Yanos, I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy feeling here. Thank you.
Okay, are we, Mr. Smith?
James Smith, 31 Albert Road. I know typically in other meetings, we always did it very automatically, but I would like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration of the first article that we acted on.
We haven't passed it yet. We haven't done-
No, Article Five.
We haven't-
We haven't done it yet.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Oh, we haven't got-
Glad someone's thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just want, Anne Gaffney, 28 Tokenell Drive. So, I just wanted to kind of relay conversations here. In making the amendment, if you would read what we then actually proposed.
The motion is to remove administrative expense and labor cost from the proposed item list on the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund.
So, what that means, in my understanding, from my discussions up at the front table there, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would then, the dollar amount would stay the same for the article, the money would, $200,000 would still go into the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, and when we go to the general fund, I want you all to be aware that I would ask that, now, help me, Attorney Mayor, help me make sure I'm doing this correctly, that we put that position in the general fund budget so that it's, so that we don't run into problems later where we need to fire somebody because we're just trying to move money around? Can you help? Did I say that correctly? I think so. Okay, I'm forgetting, I think so. So, that's what we'd like to do, because my intention is not to remove the position, but just change where the funding is coming from. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dolan?
Point of clarification. If we were to remove administrative expense labor costs, then it would be my understanding that the article total would be decreased by $16,000 to $184,000 to $200,000, because if we leave the money in there but can't spend it on the specific intention, then the money's actually no good to us in that account. And then if we were to add it back into the operating fund, then it's a double hit to the taxpayer, sixteen in this fund that we can't expend, and sixteen in the operating fund that we would expend. So, I would, I would, if my understanding is incorrect, and we're not going to decrease it by one eighty, down to 184,000, then I would ask the petitioners to reconsider their motion to decrease the budget in accordance with decreasing the task, and then that would, that gives us budgetary room and tax rate room to add it back in to another line item, which would be the general operating fund.
Mr. Mayor, what would you recommend?
All right. The bottom line on the motion is merely to remove that purpose for which the council may draw funds from the trust fund. The trust fund is a single fund, so that additional money will be in there still, but can't be used for that purpose. It can be used for the roof, though. That's one. Two, the idea is, and it should be clear so that the meeting's intent is clear, is that it's not so much that you don't want the job done and to have the right people to do the job, it's just where the funds should come from. And that was the intent and the statement of the motion, and I see a nodding head so that we're all clear on what we're doing. Fund stays the same, it will be in the same account, the council will have the discretion to use the fund and those funds in it. Then you can deal with just making sure that you cover that out of the operating budget, and then you're not, they're two different purposes in two different places.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Adam Johnson, nigh Rebecca Drive. I have a couple really confused questions on this. One, how is this different than what we were told, what they, was tried to do last year where their position was, attempted to be removed, and we all decided that we couldn't do that because it was a bottom-line budget, and that you couldn't selectively remove one person's salary?
Mr. Karen?
The difference is, is that you're dealing with, you're not dealing with a budget here, you're dealing with the Maintenance Trust Fund. That's an entirely different matter, and you can identify what purposes you want the fund used for or not.
Okay. And then, follow up with that. Then, what you've just, was just described is then we're going to increase taxes because we're not removing the money that we're already saying we're going to pay this person's salary from the Maintenance Trust Fund, and now we're saying we're going to add that money into a different warrant article. So, we're actually, if, if we change this, we're increasing taxes, as I understand it, because we're still going to put the same amount of money in the Maintenance Trust Fund, and then we're going to have to increase the budget somewhere else to pay for this person's salary. Is that a correct statement?
Do you want me to say the intention?
Sure.
So, so my intention then is that I'm feeling like an undesignated fund balance, $16,000 isn't $460,000, so I figure the town council can work that out.
I'm still very confused on what we're, on how we're trying.
I'm very confused.
I really don't think we should do it this way, because I don't think anybody understands what we're voting on and trying to do. If we want to move this person's, everybody agrees we should be paying this person, we should be paying, the concern is, should we be paying them out of this maintenance fund? If we want to pay them out of a different fund, then we need to reduce the maintenance fund by the money they want to spend and move that money, and, and move that money into some other budget. Otherwise, we're just setting ourselves up to, for failure.
Okay. Before we continue, can we get a second on this motion?
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we did. Okay. Mr. DeMarco?
Just, I saw Mr. Herman did second that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, let me see if I could state this back the way I understand it in logical steps. Step one, Article Four, I believe the proposal is, is to amend it so that it is $184,000, not $200,000.
No.
No, no.
The amendment does not state that.
Let me, let me state the way that I think it would, it should flow so that people will get what they want without raising taxes. Step one, if you reduce this line item by $184,000, by sixteen thousand, so that it's $184,000, then step two would be, when we go back to Article Five, either Dave's, Dave's going to have to come up with sixteen thousand someplace else to pay for this, one-third of this individual's salary, or we need to amend Article Five to increase it by sixteen thousand, in which case, I would assume the town manager would use that additional funds to, to pay for this. So, that's the way I see it flow, if you want to meet the needs of this. If you leave it, that this is still $200,000, but you don't want this item in there, then Dave has to, can't use the sixteen thousand from Expendable Maintenance, either has to find it in the budget or reduce this person's hours by a third.
Okay.
All right.
Dan Bouchard, 80 tokenell drive. My understanding from following all this, if we leave it the way it is, we're increasing, we're going to increase the budget by sixteen thousand because Counselor Dolan is going to make a motion to increase the budget by sixteen thousand. So, I'd like to make an amendment to the amendment to reduce-
No, you can't now. You have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment, then I'll make a motion to reduce it by sixteen thousand, to make it easier.
Dan Collins, Fort Park Avenue. This does, the way it's currently proposed, we are going to raise taxes by $16,000, because we have to add that sixteen thousand, or this $184,000 has to, or it has to move down to 184,000, which does not sound like it's the amendment, according to Mr. Mayor. So, let's, I think we should move the question.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Dolan?
Thank you. Just one last comment. Just to try to clear this up, I know it's confusing. What I'm encouraging at this point is to defeat, defeat the amendment because of the classification of funds, and that would encourage a member of the legislative body, if it was defeated, to step back to the microphone, make the amendment again very similarly, but to decrease the Maintenance Trust Fund expenditure by sixteen thousand. So, that gives us room, without an added tax increase, to move the, the money into the operating fund.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question. As many are in favor of moving the question signify by raising your card, and those against, the motion is moved. Okay. We are voting on the amendment that reads, "To remove administrative expense labor costs from the proposed item list on the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund." All those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your card. All those opposed to the amendment, the amendment fails.
Thank God.
Okay, we are going-
Motion to restrict reconsideration.
I'm back.
Motion to restrict reconsideration.
Can we do that on an amendment?
I'm just making sure we're covering.
Not on an amendment.
I'm just covering the bases.
Okay. We are discussing Article Four as written in your book. Mr. Bouchard?
I'd like to make an amendment to Article Four to reduce the amount by $16,000. And to eliminate the general administrative labor costs.
Who's second? Mr. Dolan, okay. Can I have that in writing, Dan, please? Any discussion on the amendment?
I have a discussion. I have a question.
Mr. O'Keefe?
Okay, folks, we're going in circles here, okay? All we're doing is moving sixteen thousand, well, I'm sorry. All we're doing with these- All we're doing with these questions is taking money from one budget and moving it to another. For the sanity's sake, let's just leave it alone, and going forward, I think Dave gets the hint that people don't want that in the budget. So we can fix it going forward. So let's just vote to pass the, to pass the maintenance trust fund as is and move forward. That's my suggestion as one counselor. Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe, I would argue with you that if you, if we do pass it the way it's written, then you're setting a precedent that it's okay to have salaries come out of a maintenance trust fund, which is not what it's intended for. So I would say, don't move ahead, and let's, let's have our discussion and, and vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Farrell?
Can we move the question, please?
Do I have a second? Okay. All those...
I can't speak.
Questions been moved.
I was at the mic before it was moved.
Go on.
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. I think you should pass this article as written, and next year, when the town has the budget hearings, attend the hearings and make sure that Mr. Karen removes that item from the expendable maintenance trust fund. You have to watch what's going on so that you don't just object at the town meeting. And remember, this is the last town meeting, so you'll have to go to the deliberative session. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to vote on the amendment, which reads, "To reduce the amount by 16,000 and eliminate the administrative expense labor cost." All those in favor of the amendment, signify by raising your card. All those opposed, the amendment fails. Okay. We are back to amendment, we're back to Article Four. Any discussion from the head table?
I make a motion to move the question.
Second?
I'll wait till after, I've got a question.
Okay. All those in favor of moving Article Number Four, signify by raising your card. All those against? Okay. We have moved the question.
Now you got to vote on Article...
Okay. We are going to vote on Article Number Four. As many are as in favor of Article Four, signify by raising your card. All those against Article Four, raise your card. Article Four passes.
Motion to reconsider. Second?
Okay. We, as many are in favor of restricting reconsideration of Article Four, signify by raising your card. Those against? Okay. We have restricted reconsideration of Article Four.
If I may, I believe the motion was to reconsider, not to restrict reconsideration.
It was corrected by, we have to redo it because it was corrected by the mic.
Okay. To restrict reconsideration. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're restricting reconsideration. Okay. Amendment to Article Number Five, which, the amendment was yes, 95, no, 105. The amendment fails. 95 to 105. Peter? No? Okay. We are going to Article Five. Any discussion? Sir?
I just need a clarification. When you have people standing up here at the microphone, and it happened to me earlier, the question was moved. I believe it's my right to be able to say something before moving the question. Somebody just challenged it about a minute and a half ago, and you've changed the rules again, so what is it? If you have people up here at the mic that need to speak, shouldn't they be able to speak, then you move the question, or are you going to cut them off?
It depends if you've spoken before and how long the discussion is. The town council and the administrators may speak after it's been moved.
So you're going to just arbitrarily make the decision, then, when enough is enough?
It depends how long the discussion has been.
Okay.
Okay. We have a request.
Madam, moderator, I apologize, but so this don't happen again. I would like to make a motion that we overrule the moderator, in that if you're in line to speak and somebody moves the question, that you respect that person that's in line and give him the opportunity, him or her, the opportunity to speak. And that's my motion.
All those in favor of overruling the moderator, signify by raising your card. All those against? Okay. Overruled. Can we go to Article Five?
No, you won. You won. She overruled you. She overruled you again.
I'm sure. Okay. We're going to, we have a request for paper ballot for Article Five. We will, all those, we will use B. Make sure it is B. Make sure that you use, there are two sheets there, use B. Do not use H, J.
Madam Moderator, point of order, would you please tell the public which article they're voting for, because there've been a lot of amendments and talks about different things. This is on the budget.
Article Five. We're voting on the budget.
Thank you.
B, B Bravo. Baker. Austin. Boy. It's a military problem. I thought that would be in about 30 seconds. Oh, yeah, that's right. Oh, yes, I was. I was hoping by noon.
I had the tab, I just didn't... If you have not voted, please stand.
Can I ask a question while we're in between warrant articles?
Sure.
Of the council or the town manager? This is the second time in three years that we have played a guessing game on the budget because of what the state has done in between budget season. Next year, with the deliberative session and going forward, we have to have, as far as I know, Al can correct me, 45 days, the deliberative session before voting day? Correct? With, with the federal law? Okay. So, coming up in some year, we may be voting on this budget as deliberative session in January, before any budget has come out, any proposed budget. I would like to know if there is any mechanism for us to change voting day in the future so that we are not having this guessing game every year in March and not knowing what is going to happen. If we were having these meetings the end of March, beginning of April, and voting in May, we may have a better idea of what money we're playing with, instead of playing these guessing games every year. So I'd like to know if there's any way we can do that.
Mr. Karen?
There are three options for a town meeting. There's March, April, and May. They all have different dates.
Yep.
Just please understand is that the state budget at times has not been finalized until June, so even in the worst of scenarios, the most convenient for the town with a May town meeting, the worst scenarios of the state, we'd still have that degree of uncertainty going forward.
Okay.
Has, has everyone voted? Okay. All right. I'm sorry. We are going to Article Number Six. To see if the town will vote and raise, vote to raise and appropriate the sum set forth below to be placed in the capital reserve funds already established, and to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance in the amount of $125,000 toward this appropriation. Ambulances, 60,000. Highway trucks, 80,000. Highway heavy equipment, 40,000. Fire trucks, 145,000. For a total of 325,000. Mr. DeMarco?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to make a motion that we move Article Number Six to town meeting. This article was supported unanimously by the town council, 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I second that motion, Madam Moderator.
Okay. And Mr. Brown to present?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Moderator. This appropriation allows the town to plan for the replacement of highway and fire equipment without having wild swings in the tax rate from one year to the other. It's similar to the previous article that, that was just voted on. The town maintains a schedule over an eight-year period, forecast out these future purchases. Generally, highway trucks are replaced every seven to 10 years, ambulance is every three, and fire trucks every 12. It is important to note that we rely on the department managers, which is the DPW director, the chief of police, excuse me, the chief of the fire department, and his staff to guide us in what types of purchases and are appropriate and when. So we work hand-in-hand with the folks who take care of the roads, and we work hand-in-hand with the fire chief in terms of public safety needs. Similar to the expendable maintenance trust fund, Article Four, the recent economic times over the last couple of years, has forced us to kind of reduce the investment we typically make in this, in this line item, and we've had to use some funds from the undesignated fund balance to reduce the tax rate. So we played a very challenging balancing act by trying to provide funds for this equipment that's needed, and at the same time, keep the tax rate associated with it as, as level as possible. So I think the council's done a very good job of finding that balance. And I think it's important to note, given the previous discussion on public safety, that as one member of this current council, this, this proves in my mind that we do indeed support our public safety officials in terms of the equipment they request. We also support our roads and infrastructure, because those two things make up the essential services within the town. So, we are very much in favor of, of this body voting in favor of that. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Okay. Mr. Lakis?
The Budget Committee supports this Article Seven to Nothing.
Thank you. Do we have discussion? Mr. O'Keefe?
Madam Moderator, I move the question.
Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, signify by raising your card. All those opposed, we move the question. As many are in favor of Article Six, signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those against, signify by raising your card. Article Six passes.
Madam Moderator, move to restrict reconsideration, Article Six.
Okay. A second? Greg Warner? As many are in favor of restricting reconsideration, signify by raising your card. Opposed? Restricting reconsideration passes. We are going to Article Number Seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 for the future updating of the town master plan, to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance for this purpose, and to place said funds in the non-capital reserve fund established for this purpose under Article 14 at the 2008 town meeting. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will motion that we move this question to town meeting. It was supported by the council, 5-0, noting that 100,000 of the, of what it would cost to do the master plan was approved at the 2008 town meeting. Given the number of things that will be happening in the town through the planning board, I'll move this question. Excuse me. Motion this.
Second, Mr. Dolan?
Yes, I'll second the motion, Madam Moderator.
Madam Moderator, I respect them moving the question, I'll respect that, but I was up here waiting to ask a question concerning this.
He didn't move the question.
You can't, yeah.
I spoke in error.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I thought he said.
Mr. Garrett?
I spoke in error.
Before, what have we got? Okay. On Article Number Five, we had 176 yeses, 30 nos. The budget passes. Mr. Garrett?
Second?
Second.
Motion to restrict consideration. Anyone out there made a motion?
Zan?
A second to reconsideration. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration?
Raise your card. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration, signify by raising your card. Those against? We have restricted reconsideration of Article Number Five. We're now going to have a presentation on Article Seven.
Yes, we did. Nice work. Put it up.
My name is Andre Garrett, Community Development Director. Article Seven proposes to appropriate additional $50,000 towards the creation of a comprehensive master plan. We are moving from a update. The 1997 master plan was an update, then 2004 master plan was an update. What we're proposing here is to do a comprehensive plan to establish a document to guide the future growth of Lunandary. Staff and the planning board purposely chose this time to do this project because we're going to take advantage of the decennial, the census data that's going to be released soon. The master plan typically consists of, well, by law, it has to have two components. One, establishment of a vision, and two, it has to have a land use plan. Historically, planning, the master plan has always included items such as community examination of the community facilities, housing, recreation, economic development, transportation issues, population and demographic information, look, an examination of our natural resources, utilities, utilities both public and private, and culture and historic resources. And the town is not limited to those categories, but historically, master plans always encompass those types of issues. It is the responsibility of the planning board to create the master plan and approve it. Typically, we, we move forward with a steering committee, and, or the supplement the planning board's effort on this, on this project, and my guess is that the planning board will probably move forward to do that as well. So, the process, if this, obviously, this article is passed, and we move forward, please keep your eyes on the papers, because we will be advertising for volunteers for this, for this purpose. It's going to be the master plan and the steering committee, if this one is established, that will put together the master plan package, everything that we want to accomplish in that master plan, to chart our future in Lunandary, will be in that, and it will be sent out for competitive bidding. that, and it will be sent out for competitive bidding. And it will be the planning board and its steering committee that will choose from those entities that selected a bid on this document as who we move forward with. So staff asks for your support on this article, and we look forward to working with you on this project.
I have a question for Andre when he's ready, before he walks away.
Okay, let's hear from the Budget Committee. Mr. Jorgensen?
Yes, the Budget Committee voted seven-zero in favor of this funding, so that we would indeed be prepared for our future appropriately. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baldessaro?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My question is for Andre. Although this is a win-win, there's no taxes, but it's still money coming out of the general fund. But my question to you is, where we have a GIS person in place, and we're accumulating all this data throughout the year from assessing office, from all these different offices, and we have high-paid salaries in your office, why are we outsourcing $50,000 or whatever to someone else when we have the talents right here in the town? This is where I'm confused on that one.
I believe every master plan that we have done in Lunendary has been contracted out because it's a big undertaking. I mean, it takes about a year, a year and a half for a master plan to be established. And the reason why it's being sent out for bid or contracted out is that we want a person, or we want an entity that's going to be specifically keeping the task of establishing a master plan on task and on time. If it's done internally and given the other duties that we're charged with, we just couldn't put that much time in there. Therefore, a one-year effort or a year and a half effort turns into like a five-year effort because of the amount of time that you have to put in, and the public participation, and all the things that go into creating a master plan to be done. And that's why you contract out and to have that project contracted out.
Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to correct something, a slip of the tongue out, just to make sure the audience is clear, this is expenditure that will not be coming out of the operating fund, but will be coming out of a special undesignated fund balance. So just to be clear, the designation of where the money would be coming from.
Dana Coons, Two Aspen Circle. I would urge that this be passed. It's money well-spent. I'm currently on the planning board, and I served on the previous master plan steering committee. And the company we hired did an excellent job. They were very professional. And the amount of time and effort that goes into this is something that we would literally probably have to hire five to 10 people to be able to do it in the same amount of time. So it's money well-spent. It was, Andre, do you remember the name of the company? I know they're out of Saratoga Springs, New York.
Ian Planning Associates. They may or may not be the one we choose in future, but the past one worked very well.
Yeah, and I mean, we never once, even in inclement weather, they were always here on time. You know, so they were an excellent company to work with, and I hope they come back to bid on it again.
Mr. Oswald?
Call the question.
Second by Mr. DiMarco. All those in favor of moving the question signify by raising your card. All those opposed, we move the question. We are voting on Article number seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 for the future updating of the town master plan, to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance for this purpose, and to place said funds in non-capital reserve fund established for this purpose under Article 14 at the 2008 town meeting. All those in favor of Article seven signify by raising your card. All those against, Article seven passes. Madam Moderator, make a motion to restrict reconsideration.
Who's second? Kathy Wagner. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration signify by raising your card. All those against, we restrict reconsideration. We're going
to Article number eight.
Article number eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum set forth below from the special revenue funds already established. Such appropriations shall be used for the purpose of covering police outside details, cable and sewer expenses, and shall be funded from various vendors and users of police cable and sewer services. Any surplus in such funds shall not be deemed part of the general fund accumulated surplus and shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a specific amount from said funds for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the funds or the source of revenue. Sewer Division Funds, $4,579,758. Cable Franchise Fee Fund, $366,657. Police Outside Detail Fund, $465,315, for a total of $5,411,730 cents. Mr. Brown? Five million, four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Town Council supports this article by a vote of five.
First, the motion.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I make a motion to move this article before town meeting for a vote.
Mr. O'Keefe?
Mr. Moderator, I second that.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, still in the article, these are self-funding funds. The sewer fund is for the municipal sewer system, which includes both Dairy and Manchester Treatment Plant supporting costs, our proportionate share, the Cable Astic Center, which is funded by franchise fees, and police outside details that are paid by those entities requesting the service, and we also charge a fee for cruiser rental on detail assignments.
The Budget Committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Budget Committee supports this in favor, seven-zero.
Is there any discussion of Article eight? Seeing none, we move to the question. As many are in favor of Article eight signify by raising your cards. Those opposed, Article eight passes. Recognize Ms. Gaffney for moving the question, seconded by Mr. Farmer. As many are in favor of restricting reconsideration signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, reconsideration is restricted. We now move on to Article nine. Article nine. To see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Town of Lunendary and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3160, which calls for the following appropriations for salaries and benefits over what was raised under any current agreements and policies for the employees of the union. Fiscal year 2012, cost increase, $5,000. Tax increase, .002 cents. Total estimated cumulative cost, $5,000. Average rate increase, zero. Fiscal year 2013, $62,325. Tax increase from the previous year, .02 cents, .2 cents, pardon me, two cents. Total estimated cumulative cost, $67,325. Average rate increase, two percent. Fiscal year 2014, cost increase, $78,513. Tax increase, two cents from the previous year. Total estimated cumulative cost, $145,838. Average rate increase, 2.5 percent and further. To raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 for fiscal year 12 expenses, .002 cents on the tax rate, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits over those of the appropriation at the current staffing levels paid under existing agreements. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to support this, to move this to town meeting, and the Town Council supported this Article five-zero.
All right. Mr. O'Keefe?
Mr. Moderator, I second.
All right, Mr. Farrell?
Ladies and gentlemen, this collective bargaining group worked with the Town Council hand-in-hand this year. We asked them for a 0% increase. They did come forward and work with us on a 0% increase. They should be, you know, of all, we only had one agreement to work on this year. We went back and forth, they bargained in good faith, the town did the same. This is a very solid agreement between our employees and the town, and I would ask that you support it.
Ms. Woodmore?
The Budget Committee would like to recognize the excellent work of the negotiating team on both sides of the table, as well as the firefighters who support the contract. It is a reasonable agreement that provides for our firefighters, as well as offers a responsible diligence on behalf of our taxpayers. The Budget Committee is unanimous in its support of Article nine with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Baldessaro?
Yeah, thank you. Al Baldessaro, 41 Hall Road. First of all, before I say this here, I want to make sure we understand this thing against the fire department. I don't want to see me in the headlines or on the blogs that are against the firemen tomorrow. But anyways, my question is, you said there's a 0%. I'm looking at this, and it says 4.5% or 2%, 2.5. Then also, I just want a question, which I don't see without going to the book. What do we do with the insurance buyouts in other areas? Where are we at with that stuff that was supposed to be corrected here the last few years? Can somebody answer that question?
Mr. Karen?
To answer your first question, Al, the salary increases, the cost-of-living adjustments for this contract is 0% for next year, 2% for the year after, and 2.5% for the third year of the contract. With respect to the insurance buyout, with respect to the insurance buyout, it was reduced in the last contract to a maximum of $4,244 for family coverage. That's being reduced to, I think, $3,300 in year two and $2,500 in year three, which is the baseline, which all our other units are currently at.
Mrs. Karen?
Pauline Garen, 369 Mammoth Road. I know the Town Council said that the fire union gave concessions, but they were not really dollar concessions. What they're getting in the contract is no COLA this year, the first year, but they're getting COLA the second and third years, plus their step increases of 2.0 for fiscal year 13 and 2.5 for fiscal year 14. So that gives them, not in fiscal 12, but fiscal 13 and 14, two raises, the COLA plus the step. They also increased the range of salaries. They can go up two steps during the three-year period. In addition to that, they get longevity pay. If you've been with the fire department for six years, you get $750, not a one-time payment, but every year. If you've been, then that goes in five-year increments. The highest is $1,700 annually if you're in the fire department for 20 years. Now, this is a lot of raises. The average person in the public is lucky if they do get one raise. I think this contract is taking the taxpayers over the COLAs, and it should not be voted in until the fire department makes more concessions in the money they're going to be earning. Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just for additional clarification, we are transitioning to a new step system. Currently, there is a 5% increase between steps. That's been reduced to 2.5%. For the first year, it'll be moved to the next higher step and then to another step. So their increase will be a maximum 5% this year. In a lot of cases, a lot less, somewhere between 2.5% and 5%. That 5% is already included in the operating budget. That's a continuing appropriation from previous agreements. Also, the fires have agreed to reduce the amount of sick leave they can cash out when they leave. A total of 58% for new employees and 41% for existing employees. And third, looking at the COLA, a lot of our agreements, in fact, I think the library is still under a five-year agreement in which they issue cost-of-living adjustments per year of 3% to 4.5%. And our fire employees will work with us to eliminate that program and to go to a straight 0% this coming year, 2% in year two, 200% in year three.
Thank you. Sir?
Bill Mahin, 27 Red Deer Road. And speaking to the COLAs, could you explain how you get to a certain percentage on what the COLA increase is going to be going forward when you don't know what the cost of living is going to be?
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, most of the contracts in the past have had a floor of 3%, a ceiling of 4.5%, tied to the change in the Boston Consumer Price Index. And during our negotiations, it was our preference to go for a set figure, recognizing that our past has been, it's been 3% minimum. And so in this contract, it'll be 0, 2, 2.5%, which represents both the minimum and the maximum. It's just a set rate.
Okay, just to follow up to that. Last year, when the contract was presented, because it was a retroactive contract, the question was brought up then that the feds did not allow a COLA last year. And the question was, why were there cost-of-living increases? And the explanation that we got was that this was a retroactive one. It's going back to make up for the years. Well, the feds didn't allow a COLA again this year, so it should be two years of 0% on the COLA. That's what we were told last year, that it would be made up in the coming contract. If the feds don't allow a COLA, why should the town allow a COLA?
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just for clarification, the agreement which was approved last year was with a different unit, and that did include some retroactive payments because they'd been without a contract for four years. That was something not negotiated by the town. It was a fact finder report, which the vote at the town meeting agreed to fund, so we have to fund that. And I don't know what the feds are going to give for a COLA or not in FY13, but in FY12, there'll be no cost-of-living increase.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, the unit that we did last year was the firefighters' unit. We didn't do the firefighters' unit last year.
Police.
Police, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, last year was the fire captains, the supervisors. This year is the firefighters, different unit.
Okay, that's fine then. But the explanation was that they were getting a COLA because it was to make up for it, and then going forward, there would be made adjustments. Now, maybe it was for that unit, not this one. I just don't understand how if the federal government says there is no cost-of-living adjustment for two years in a row, that the contract makes provision for cost-of-living adjustments. I'm just looking for an explanation on that, that's all.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, is it Bill?
Yes.
Yes, Bill, I don't think there's an answer to that question, but it's important, because you brought up last year, it's important to make sure everyone understands what that was. We did not come to an agreement with that unit. The unit included fire captains and police as well, but it also included lots of town employees. It's kind of a combination of management-type people. The Town Council and Budget Committee unanimously said, don't do it. The majority of the people in this room decided they could afford it. They approved it. So you need to ask, if those people are here, why they did it.
No, that's not what my question is.
We have no answer for your question because we didn't agree with the fact finder report, which is what made the retroactive.
You're missing my point. My point is, if the federal government says there is no cost-of-living adjustment for Social Security recipients for two years in a row because they've determined that there's no cost-of-living increase, which is debatable, but they've decided that there is no cost-of-living adjustment for two years, but yet we're allowing it in the contract.
A fact finder put it in there.
I'm talking this contract.
Oh, this contract.
Okay.
It was a negotiated item, and this is what we negotiated. I guess that's the answer you're looking for.
Okay.
Bill Brinkhurst, 7 Welsh Road. I'm retired. I have not had a cost-of-living increase in three years, although they did give us $250, which is not cumulative. This is all cumulative that we're talking about now. If you give them 2% now, it's compound interest. And there's a whole bunch of us that haven't had a raise in three years. Thank you. Ma'am, pardon me, Lisa?
I'd just like to make some comments about some of the agreements that were reached with the firefighters in this contract. The insurance buyout referenced by Representative Baldessaro, that was reduced by 41%. Sick leave accrual upon separation, reduced by 37%. Sick leave accrual for existing employees was reduced by 42%. And sick leave accrual for new employees was reduced by 58%. These are significant contributions. They have accepted a 0% COLA for this year, and the budget They have accepted a zero percent COLA for this year, and the Budget Committee, as I said, has been unanimous in its support of this agreement, and we urge that the community support the work that's been done by the negotiating teams.
Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The comment I was going to make was largely just stated, that the interesting thing that you can't see in the article as written in front of you, are those deeper negotiations that aren't listed in the, what you only see here are the raises over a three-year period, the salary increases, which average one and a half percent over three years. The concessions that were made, and I think Counselor Brown said that this is a negotiation, in exchange for those rather deep cuts in the non-salried benefit portion of the contract, in exchange for that, you're seeing a one and a half percent average salary increase. Now, the, the issue that, that you should keep in the back of your mind, should you defeat this article, that the old, or the existing contract continues in its current form, so those concessions, those, those deeper concessions that we just spoke of, we lose. And those benefits at a higher level stay in place, and they come off the table, so that we go through, if we were to renegotiate this contract again, or start over again, we start at, at, at zero, and have to, have to negotiate that again. So these are some considerable concessions, that by the way, happen to line up exactly with the police department, so that there's an even-handedness, or fairness, if you will, across our union contracts. So I would encourage you to pass this in its current form, I think it's good for the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Barb Statmiller, Crestview Circle, and I'm actually going to move to turn to the body, if you don't mind. I think that in most things, I'm fairly fiscally responsible, and I think there are a lot of areas where cuts can be made, where it can be more of a business decision. When it comes to firefighters, it all goes out the window for me, so this is my personal belief. When I think about the people that say, "I'm going to run into that burning building, I'm going to get there as fast as I can to save your family member who is having a heart attack," and I'm sorry if I get emotional, because my dad passed away, and the firefighters who came to him worked so hard. When I think about the small amount of money that really the firefighters are asking for, I just, I can't imagine not passing this, I can't imagine quibbling over COLA for those people that put their lives on the line for the rest of us. I know I couldn't do it, I would not have the strength to do what our firefighters do. So I know this is a bit more of an emotional plea to all of you, but I am going to ask that you do pass this, that you consider how important the work is that our firefighters do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to keep in mind, in lining with the police contract, the police contract passed at town meeting last year, was a three percent increase over a three-year period, which was nine percent. This contract is half of that. We are, you know, this was done extremely well by the negotiating team, so I ask again that you support it.
Robert LeBrew, 76 Hall Road. I have two questions. Question number one is, if this contract does not get ratified, will they be so-called evergreened under their current contract?
Mr. Karen.
The town has subscribed to the evergreen theory forever, which means, which means that the health continues, the steps continue, the COLA does not. Okay? So they would continue, in this particular example, instead of receiving a transition step of less than two and a half percent, and a two and a half percent, they'd be getting a five percent step, for those twenty-five percent of the employees who are in the step system, seventy-five percent of our employees are maxed, so.
Right, but under the, under the proposed new step system, would everybody now be eligible for at least one step increase, even with the new system?
No, the max and min have not changed, just we stretched out the step system.
And what, what percentage are maxed?
It's two and a half percent between steps.
No, but what percentage of employees covered by this bargaining agreement are at their maximum step?
About seventy-five percent.
Okay, thank you. Just one other comment, I've heard some, some emotional pleas here, and that's okay, but I understand, and I know all of you understand, you can't fabricate, you can't put together a budget based on emotion, has to be on facts and figures. Having said that, I think the fact that both Town Council and the Budget Committee unanimously approved this contract speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Dan Collins, Fort Park Avenue. I'm fine with the salary in general, however, I have some difficulties with some of the benefits that there, the, are in the contract, such as seven hundred days accumulated sick days, seven hundred hours, excuse me. It should be year to year, and, you know, I know that things have been, you know, shrunk by thirty-seven percent and forty-one percent. Still, nobody in the private sector has seven hundred hours worth of sick days that they can fill up. There's workman's compensation, there's other avenues in case there's a real long illness or whatever. However, things like this, this is what's costing us a lot of money. So, just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Yeah, just for point of information, the current contract allows all employees to accrue twelve hundred hours. Under this agreement, the existing employees go to seven hundred, new hires go to five.
Thank you.
Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. In my opinion, this appears to be a fairly negotiated contract, and our firefighters do things that I haven't done since the Navy days, I don't run into burning buildings. I think this is a fair contract, and I suggest the town vote yes on Article Nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coons.
Danny Coons, Tewasum Circle. First of all, I'd like to thank the Budget Committee and the Council, and the fire department for their equitable negotiations. One thing I think they did this year was, they're bringing everything more to a parity with the private sector. As everybody said, nobody gets in the private sector, these kind of things. We all know what's happening in Wisconsin and different places in the country. I think this is a great contract, and I would move, I would like to see everybody vote for it, and with that, I'd like to move the question.
Under the modified rules, that is not in order. Mrs. Gaffney.
Don't worry, I'll move it too, after I just clarify for a second. So, because the town acts on an evergreen-type system, there are current employees where, if we do not approve this contract, they would actually get a higher raise, in addition to more benefits?
Well, higher, slightly percentage higher step.
So their next step would be higher than it would be under the new system?
That's correct.
Well, I'm thinking this is a no-brainer, we get to bring them on this lower step and take away some of their benefits. If you're fiscally responsible, I would say you'd want to vote for this. I'm going to move the question, thanks.
But before you move the question, under the new modified rules, Mr. Brown had his hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Brown.
It's going to be quick. As part of the budget process, we made sure that we asked the town manager, based on where we were at in the negotiations, would the contract is before you folks right now, and was put before us, would we be able to meet our goal of delivering you a flat tax rate? The answer was yes. So this was not done in a vacuum, from the overall goal of trying to keep your tax rate flat. So we met our goal at the same time of, of coming up with a contract that the majority, that all of us felt was fair. So we felt we accomplished the bigger picture for you folks as well. And some of us, we're all in the private sector here, some of us were out of work last year, most of us didn't have raises, and still don't have raises, so we did reflect that in our discussions.
Okay. Ms. Gaffney moved the question, seconded by Mr. DiMarco. As many as are in favor of moving the question, signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, the question is moved. We now move to the vote on Article Nine, and, let's see, Mr. Baldessaro, Mr. Brown, is Mr. Green here? I don't see Mr. Green. Mr. Frida here? Don't see Mr. Frida. Mr. Dalton here? Don't see Mr. Dalton. Pauline Karen? She's here. Mr. Farmer? I see Mr. Farmer, and Mr. Douglas. I do not see Mr. Douglas, we do not have five.
Mr. Frida was here.
Oh, sorry, I missed him. Okay, we got the five, and we have it in writing, so we go to a written ballot. The question now is, we're voting on C. Please vote C. Each one of these times, we've had ballots other than the correct ones. While this is moving, while we are doing this, we're going to move to Article Ten. Could we keep it down, so we can just keep the meeting going here? Article Ten. To see if the town will vote, if Article Nine is defeated, to authorize the Town Council to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Nine cost items only. Mr. O'Keefe.
Mr. Moderator, the Council voted five-zero to support this in, in town meeting.
Okay. Mr. Farrell.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is simply a mechanism, if you should so approve, and the Council did support it five-zero, that would give us the ability to schedule a special town meeting without seeking court approval. If you decided today to reject this proposal, that would give us a chance to go back to the bargaining table with this unit, and this is the mechanism to allow that without court approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Budget Committee voted seven-zero, recommending Article Ten.
Okay. Is there any discussion of this article? Seeing none, we move to the question. As many as are in favor of Article Ten, signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, the eyes have it, Article Ten has been passed. We now move to Article Eleven. Ms. Gaffney moves to restrict reconsideration, seconded by Mr. Oswald. As many as in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, reconsideration is restricted. We now move to Article Eleven. Article Eleven. Shall the voters of the Town of Lunenary vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to fund the replacement of personal protective clothing for members of the Lunenary Fire Rescue? If approved, the cost of running the program will become part of the annual operating budget in subsequent years. And this is by petition. Do we have a petitioner? Is there a petitioner here to speak on this? Yeah. Yes. Has everybody voted? Last call for the boxes. Okay, voting is closed. Oh, you, you make the motion? I recognize you, the purpose of making the motion.
I'm sorry, yes, I make the motion, I.
Okay, do we have a second? And we have a second, Mr. Carroll. You may go now.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Vinnie Carroll, 103 High Range Road, been a resident of Lunenary since 1987. I come before you today, one of the items that was deleted in the budget, the proposed budget for next year was $22,500, which covers the protective clothing for our fire department, our full-time firefighters. It comes out of a budget that's called the Fire Administration Safety Program, and the individual line item out of that is called protective clothing. It has been deemed by the Council and, and the budget member, not all, I do appreciate everyone who supported us from the budget and the Town Council, that the money can come from other ways. What this basically is, is you've already voted on a couple of expendable maintenance trust funds, that's what this is. Every year, we replace six to seven sets of gear for our firefighters. This is their primary turnout gear, which includes their bunker pants, their boots, their coats, their helmets, the whole gear, for an estimated cost of three to $4,000, depending on how much they needed at that time. And this replaces the gear on a yearly basis. The monies for this year have been reduced. Chief McCaffrey said that he could find money in the budget, possibly to get one or two replacement sets of gear for the firefighters that currently need it. There are six firefighters right now that need gear, that are over six years old, that need to have their gear replaced. That's why I put the citizens petition forward. I ask your support, please.
Thank you. And for the Town Council, Mr. DiMarco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The department currently has fifty-two units of protective clothing, which includes things like coats, pants, boots, helmet, hood, gloves, suspenders, a mask, and a regulator. The cost to outfit each firefighter is approximately $3,800 at present. Service life is eight years normal usage, barring any damage. It's inspected each year by manufacturer standards. For the last three years, we have been replacing about six to seven sets that had reached the age limit, and at least four that were replaced for not meeting standards around a five-year span. This plan has been in place to be able to cycle all the units over an eight-year period. So the budget line item in fiscal year eleven, which is the year that we're currently in, was $40,000. That was reduced to $20,000 proposed for this upcoming fiscal year, which was in the budget that we just approved. And next year, so, okay, so that was done for next year. So, when we brought this up during our budget discussions, the fire chief, who's the, the department head that, that put this forward, we asked the question, we said, you know, if, if we get to the point where a firefighter has equipment that has not met the standards established by the manufacturer, and you don't have this in the budget, what are you going to do? And he assured us that he would find the money elsewhere in his budget, and that in subsequent years, you know, this would have to be restored. So, it is part of the Town Council's overall goal, we established that we would like to see a zero percent tax rate. We have essentially met that, and this is one of those many things that was presented to, to contribute to that.
Thank you. Mr. Leicas? Anybody from the Budget Committee?
Mr. Oswald, I've been called worse.
I'm sorry. The Budget Committee. The Town Council did, I'm, I'm sorry, Dan, let me just finish. The Town Council did support this with, did not support this, there was one for and four against.
Right. Mr. Oswald.
Yes, thank you. The Budget Committee voted one in favor, six opposed to this article.
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. The fire department has enough money in its budget to cover this. It had put $50,000 into the police budget for the proposed merger of the communication systems, and that money was returned to the police department, I mean, the fire department, because the merger of the communication systems was put on hold. So, the chief does have enough money in there to cover this article, as well as the next article that's coming up. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Rogers.
Hey, good morning, Jim Roger, 5 Crosby Lane, also Captain Lunenary Fire, twenty-one years. It, it is correct, there is money in the budget, but there is not enough money in the budget. That's where it gets a little dicey, right, right here, what we're looking at. What we came up with years ago was a plan to replace six sets of gear every year, and we did it almost like a capital improvement, that it would always be phased in, looking at how many employees that we have. The whole key to that whole program was that we always have a primary set of gear, a backup set of gear. Just recently, in training, we did two case studies. One case study was local, you know, up in Hookset. If people remember, in 2009, they had a fire called the Motown Fire. It was a garage, it was something like, would it be on Lunenary Road, a lot of what's common in Lunenary. What happened was, they made, the fire department made a decision not to enter the building because it was unsafe. They opened the doors up, they had lines going into the doors. One firefighter just went in, just to move some equipment out of the way, to make those lines more effective. The doors came down. This Hookset firefighter, his name is, is Jesse Gray, he was trapped inside that building. Because he had a brand-new set of gear, they was able to make, make that situation survivable. Because of his self-contained breathing apparatus, his respiratory protection in his gear, he managed, he managed through that scene, it was survivable. We just looked at another case study across the country, in Illinois, it happened two weeks ago. Firefighters went to a dwelling, they had a dwelling fire, a basement fire, they went in, as they were exiting a building, four collapsed. The firefighter, one firefighter was trapped inside the basement. Again, when they looked at the whole situation, because his gear was intact, it was brand-new gear, it met the National Fire Protection standard, he, it was a survivable situation. I can tell you right now, as Mr. Carroll said, there are six guys that need a gear. What else is going to go through? Members of the Budget Committee, members of the Council, Dave Karen, you know exactly what this budget looks like for next year. You know exactly that if Chief McCaffrey needs ten sets of gear. Keep in mind that this is the firefighter's business suit. This is a suit that he wears every day, not just for fire situations. A gentleman asked me today, he said, "Jim, how many fires do you have a year? Can that gear make it through?" He says, "You have about ten structure fires a year." He says, "You have about 10 structure fires a year." I said, "That's a great point, but they wear them for fire alarm activations, motor vehicle accidents, dumpster fires, a lot of other different situations where the gear becomes ruined or damaged." This proposal of having six sets of gear is really, it's a good practice that we've done over the course of years, and it's proven effective. If we shy away from this, I believe we're going to put our firefighters in danger. I urge you to support this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. I'm going to go to Ms. Whittmore, then Mr. Brown, then Mr. Farrell.
I'm one of the members of your Budget Committee that initially opposed this largely in light of my interest in retaining the flat tax rate for the community. However, we've sat down here today, we've got new information regarding what the budget possibilities are going to be. We had an amendment for $460,000. We were assured that that money would be found elsewhere in the budget. My intuition tells me that even if they don't close one of the fire stations, the fire department will be one of the places that the town council and the town manager will be looking to make up some of this shortfall. And however much conversation goes on at the State House, it's dependent on what money is coming down from the federal government, and I think we all know what direction that is going in. I just want to remind you, we have information today that there is going to be a serious budget shortfall of whatever amount in the coming year. The fire department will be one of those places that responsibly the community will look to make a difference. We have information that six sets of these protective clothing units are needed today. We had, prior to the new information on the budget, funding for one or two sets. That means that we are consciously underfunding a budget that affects the safety of personnel working for this community. And as a Budget Committee member, I am changing the vote. I had initially in opposition, and I am now supporting Article 11, and I urge the community to do so as well.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tough to follow that one, but I'll give it a shot. As I mentioned earlier, in crafting this budget, we started with the goal, and we're the policymakers. The work is done by the department heads through our employee, the town manager. So obviously, we rely on the department heads, the professionals who are in each of these lines of business, to tell us what direction they want to go in to meet that goal. It just makes sense that we wouldn't sit here as non-fire professionals and make fire decisions. So we asked the fire chief, "What do you think?" The fire chief stood before us, and stood before the Budget Committee, and told us that safety of his men and women is his highest priority. And when we talked to him about this budget item, he responded with that he would always do the right thing, and if a firefighter needed protective clothing, they would get it, okay? I don't recall him saying, "But I'll only do it for one or two." I think that's coming up somewhere else here today. And I'm sure the chief can stand up and say that if he needs six, he'll find the money for six. So our decision was made based on information presented to us by the professionals who do this. There may be a difference of opinion between the person who runs the department and some of the firefighters. I don't know, maybe. But as a counselor, that's what I relied on to make my singular decision, and I was satisfied, and I voted accordingly, that we would outfit these brave men and women appropriately if it was needed. And that's why I voted the way I did.
Thank you. And Mr. Farrell, and then we're going to Mr. Warner.
So about two weeks ago, I asked for a report in detail about the age of the equipment and how much it actually costs. Received that report yesterday from the town manager. It was constructed by Captain Cardwell and presented to the fire chief. The full cost of outfitting equipment is about $4,400, not $3,800. What I was able to derive from that report, and in speaking with the town manager, that we can, we're on the line, is what it kind of more or less says from an age standpoint. You have to understand, if we don't fund this money this year, we are going to fund it next year at $40,000, maybe $50,000, and the year after, because we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, okay? That's why I voted to go ahead and look at the equipment for this year, because we're only postponing the future. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the Budget Committee, and then I'll go to you. Yes. Don?
Yes, Don Jorgensen, Budget Committee, 6 Rolling Ridge. There was a determination that we, and we were assured that the items, as they came forward, and the pieces of equipment would be replaced as needed. That was number one. Now, I have no question but that if I were a firefighter, I would much prefer to have a brand-new one than one that was older. The question was, is the units that are in place adequate? And if they are not, will they be replaced? We were advised they would be replaced. If they were inadequate, if they were adequate, they would not. And they were being tested to make sure that that was a standard. So for that reason, I voted to reject this petition. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go on, the Article 9, yes, 185, no, 25. And I recognize Ms. Gaffney to restrict reconsideration, seconded by Mr. Jorgensen. As many as in favor of restricting reconsideration, raise your cards. Those opposed? Reconsideration is, on Article 9, is done. Mr. Warner?
Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I would recommend that we pass Article 11, and I would actually like to see it improved, but I'm not going to argue for that right now. This is safety gear. You want the good stuff, because the alternative is you get pre-cremated. No, thank you. We should protect our people that are working for us. And as far as it affecting my taxes, I am certainly willing to have my taxes go up this infinitesimal amount to protect the people that are working for me. Please, please, pass Article 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaffney?
And in the interest of moving along, I would ask you to restrict comments to something new, if you can, so we just... I do have something new, actually. I am noticing that on page eight of the contract that we just approved, it requires the town to provide protective clothing, and it lists specifically which items of protective clothing and, I'm sorry, not Article 3, it's paragraph 3 of Article 15. And paragraph 4 says that those articles of clothing shall meet the current NFA standards. So I assume when you say tested to the standards, that's the standard that we're talking about. So the bottom line here is that the firefighters will get the equipment that they need, because if, even if we wanted to not provide it for them, which obviously we do, it's guaranteed to them by the contract. So the question then becomes, not is this fire protective gear needed, or will it be provided, because it will, but rather, how will it be funded? And so I am actually interested in if the chief could tell us, since you're going to need to fund anything that's deficient, and if we have six that need replacing, where are we getting that money from, and does that mean decline in personnel in other ways, or overtime hours?
Chief?
Kevin McCaffrey, the fire chief. Again, it was originally decided to reduce the budget where we could to meet the town council's rules. Part of that is, this is a capital, basically a capital improvement plan that we've had in place for a considerable amount of time. This year, we looked at all the equipment, the lifespan, the actual numbers, and six units will be coming out at the end of their cycle in FY12. This would normally be replaced in the cycle. I can't tell you tomorrow that we're not going to lose 10 sets of gear when we go to the next call. Somewhere, that's going to have to be replaced, as you just said, you know, not only for the, especially for the safety, whether the contract exists or not, they're going to get the gear. Well, we have some money for a few sets that we're going to have to replace anyway, that have reached that proportional time. What we did is, we took that average time, and that's the ones that we're going to look at. And we look at them every year, for care, maintenance, and otherwise, if there's a hole in it, it gets sent back to the factory. If the factory says to us, "It's no good," it gets replaced. We'll find the money from allocation of other expendable items, which have to hold the line at that point. Again, and Councilman Farrell asked me the same question. He said, "What happens if I lose 10 sets of gear? I'll be coming back to them for 10 sets of gear somewhere at the end of the budget line."
So there aren't six right now that don't meet standards?
They'll be going out in FY12.
12.
They were bought in 2006, they're going to be going out in FY12.
And because I always lose track, this is FY11 that we're voting on, right?
No, it's FY12.
12 that we're voting on. So if they're going out in 12, and we don't have it budgeted to replace them in 12...
It'll have to, they, no, they've reached their lifespan in the total by the end of FY12.
By the end of FY12.
That's correct. So in the year...
So we expect them to go on July 30th of 2012, essentially?
That's correct.
For lack of a better term. Okay, so you don't have a plan for where that money's going to come from if we need to replace them before July 30th?
Well, we're hoping that we could get the year out of them, and in the next year's budget, replace them at that particular time.
I guess I'm looking for, you were talking before about firefighter personnel being reduced, or overtime hours, rather, being reduced, given the governor's budget. And so I'm wondering now, where does this fall in that scope?
If you're looking at $20,000, that could be a reduction in $20,000 in overtime, or $20,000 in maintenance budget, or $20,000 if we had to replace those six set of gear at that particular time. Just like if I lose 10 tomorrow, it has to come out of somewhere else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Carson?
Just listening to, you know, the whole budget process and that, and, you know...
Just give your name for the record.
Greg Carson, 19 Tokenell Drive in Lunen Derry. You know, we've talked about the budget earlier, we voted on some really big numbers, you know, I don't know what disturbs me more, that we're finding money in advance of approving a budget, or that we're using terms like adequate for our firefighters, and that, you know, something that costs a few thousand dollars per item, $20,000 items, you know, we're looking at spending an extra dollar on our taxes, you know, or $2 for the average home. I can't imagine that anybody in town would be opposed to the idea of spending the extra dollar or two, whether it's just enough to give the confidence of our firefighters who are doing these things, to know that their equipment is just merely adequate, or they're that one, they have that one last piece of equipment when they're going into a building that, you know, that they have doubts about, because it just came back, you know, borderline passing approvals. I mean, this is something that, you know, is silly nickel-and-diming compared to all of the money that we spend. So I think it's less than adequate if we go ahead and turn down this, or even the next budget item, because, you know, we need to take care of the folks who are taking care of us. And where it is such a small amount, I can't imagine anybody would be opposed to making sure that our firefighters are protected more than adequate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Jim Butler, 57 Mammoth Road. I think what's important to understand, that this equipment is their first line of defense, and it's their last line of defense. If they go into a building and their air pack doesn't work because we've let it run out, chances are, they may not make it out of the building. It's not the flame that kills people, most of the time it's the toxic smoke, and everything we have in our houses is toxic. I feel as though this is a moral obligation to our employees to make sure we give them at least the minimum safe equipment that they need to perform their jobs. It sounds like that we're going to, I don't know if we're staffing it at 10 now, I don't know if we're staffing at 9, and here in the back room, we may go to 8. So, you know, I think delays in ambulance service is going to start showing up, response time is going to be longer, and I just feel this is a moral obligation to give our firefighters the proper equipment to at least attempt to go in and either save lives or save homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Cardwell, Loving King Philip. We've talked a lot on these big items, and we're arguing over such a small amount. Is the $3 or so that this is going to cost, like one coffee, is that worth a firefighter's life?
Thank you.
Kathy Wagner, 7 Fiddler's Ridge Road. I have some questions. Vinnie touched on, this is like a trust maintenance fund, so every year we've always put 20 grand into this? 22.5. And what was the reasoning? Because the chief told you that he could find that 22.5 someplace else? Or are we just reducing that completely out of the budget?
Dave?
I'm sorry, I was misbehaving over here.
That's okay.
Originally, that line item was about $40,000, it's been down to 30 in the last couple of years, and so for the chief to make his budget, it's down $20,000 more.
Okay.
So...
So this is a direct line item cut in the fire department budget of 22.5?
That's correct.
Next year, so we have six firefighters who's going to run out in fiscal year 12, and that's what we're talking about, right?
Those are scheduled for replacement, that's correct.
Okay. How many firefighters are going to run out in fiscal year 13? Do we have that number?
Chief, do you know how many in fiscal year 13?
Australians.
Okay. Let him talk.
Seven.
Okay, so we're up to 13 that we're going to have to fund. So how much is 13 going to cost me in fiscal year 13?
It's gone up each year, the cost of equipment.
So what is, okay, so what is the cost of each uniform, or whatever we're calling?
As of today, it's $4,400, if you include top to bottom, everything.
So next year, you're going to be here telling us that you're going to need 40 grand, or maybe 60 grand, to get them right to the number. So we're spent, we're taking $20,000 out of a line item that we know we're going to have to put back in anyways next year. Why don't we just take the 20 grand out of the general fund and had moved it over there? But we couldn't do that. So now we're at a citizens' petition. And to sit here, over $3, and a huge $25 million budget, that you couldn't find $20,000 to keep these people outfitted, is appalling.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
13 units are $57,200.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bouchard?
Thank you, Kathy. Dan Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. I just want to compliment Councilor Farrell for doing his homework on that. And I know that fire chief was directed to make some cuts. Captain Rogers comes up here, he's been on the fire department for 21 years, he's in charge of their training. I believe if he says he needs that equipment, then I think we need to provide it for him. If you look at the gear that they wear every day, this is what they wear, this is to protect them. The last thing I want to see is one of our firefighters get hurt in this town because we tried to save a measly $20, I mean, $20,000. Thank you.
Ms. Karen?
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. After the fire chief submitted his budget to the town council, and the $20,000 was cut, $50,000 came back into the fire department from the police department budget. So the fire department has enough money to cover the cost of replacing this equipment. Vote no on this article.
Thank you. Oh, wait, Mr. Karen?
Just a clarification of $50,000, that was a part of a lot of the money which was transferred from the fire department to the police department under the concept of combined dispatch. Since that proposal was not included in the budget, we moved all that money back into the fire department, which pays for salaries, benefits, part-time, overtime for dispatchers, and also radio equipment. So part of that $50,000 is allocated, that function of providing dispatch services for our fire department.
Thank you.
Hi, Martin Surugis, 17 Wibleton Drive. This is an emotional appeal, again, and I think, as any department head, they're responsible for the department. I don't like this idea of doing this through a article. I understand the citizen can do that, but this is something that belongs in the department budget. When I do a department budget, I tell my boss, I said, "This is what I need for equipment, the bottom line." I trust the department to be able to do that, and I trust the chief that he'll find the money to do that. Also, the town, it's a bottom-line budget, they can find it somewhere else within the budget, and I support the Budget Committee on this, and the town council on this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farmer?
Brian Farmer, 106 Chase Road. I just want to look at a couple of things here. I know that the, I know how it works from the perspective up there, so you don't have to tell me that again. You guys gave the town manager a challenge, the town manager turns around and he gives department heads a challenge. They have to try to come up with something to fit the number. This is what they came up with, all right? That doesn't mean I'm in favor of what they came up with. Just a few minutes ago, we passed $50,000 for a master plan that we could have deferred. So we're going to go into this whole... All right? That doesn't mean I'm in favor of what they came up with. Just a few minutes ago, we passed fifty thousand dollars for a master plan that we could've deferred. So we're gonna go into this whole planning session, spend fifty grand on that, and defer safety equipment. I'm sorry, but there's something wrong with that math. There's something wrong with that equation. I would like to suggest that we, if we can, amend this to take the funds from the fund balance to pay for it, to offer a zero percent, zero on the tax rate. And then I would suggest that the voters approve this. Because I think that one thing we cannot forego ever is the equipment, the safety equipment that our firefighters wear.
Let me just... Mr. Karen, first of all, would that amendment work?
Yeah, you certainly can do that. Just so you know, we're talking about recurring expense here. So if you approve this appropriation this year, you're gonna have an impact of about six tenths of a cent on the rate. If you use surplus this year, then I presume next year, you'll be faced with that same issue of raising the tax rate six tenths of one cent to take care of this appropriation.
I think, I think...
It's totally within the voters...
I understand, but I think that next year, I think if we approve this, I think the expectation of the voters is that you include it in the general fund budget. So my motion won't satisfy that?
Mr. Farmer, let me just make sure I get your motion and I'll do the writing. So what you wanna do is, shall the voters of the town of Londonderry and council? Let me just get a wording for you to do what you want. What's... He wants to go. That the twenty thousand comes out of the fund.
Is that the language you wanna use to authorize the use of the fund balance?
Right, okay. Yep, let me just see whether this does it. I think we have language. To see if the town of Londonderry will vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund the replacement of protective clothing, to authorize the use of the June thirtieth fund balance for this purpose.
That would be the motion I would like to make.
Okay, just a second. Let me just put it in here. One second here.
Yeah, can we get this done before I do something stupid like getting myself thrown out?
No, you had your turn last time. Somebody else this time. Okay, I've got the language here. There was a point of order. Al, you had a point of order?
My question was under HB seventy-seven, we wanted the attorney to give us some type of clarification, how you should change the language.
Yep, just go use the speaker. That pertains to deliberative sessions, right?
Yeah, my question was, and I was a little confused on, under HB, I think it was seventy-seven, a new law, how the language could be changed. Was it just for town meeting? I mean, deliberative session had nothing to do with town meeting?
No, the statute doesn't prevent the amendment of an article. It just prohibits it to say, to see if. You may recall that some, you've read about that in the paper, is that you can't change the nature of the article, but you can amend it just like you would at any town meeting. The motion's perfectly proper under the law.
Okay, so he's changing the numbers, not the actual language.
No, no, you can change the language, you can't change... Okay, I got it. Okay, so what we have, let me just do it. So what we have before us is we have a motion by Mr. Farmer, basically...
To amend.
To amend so that it, we add the words, and to authorize the use of the June thirtieth fund balance for this purpose. That is the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Gaffney. We have... The motion is made and seconded. Mr. Farmer, we're now discussing the motion. Your amendment, rather.
Yes, I would ask the voters to approve the article as amended. I would actually want them to approve the amendment, then we would get around to approving the article.
Okay. I have before me a request in writing that all articles and amendments be by ballot. Do the five people... Hold on a second, just hold it, cool it. Cool it. Do the people who put in the written request wish this amendment to be by ballot? Well, I'll go ask. Al? Mike?
No, I'm fine, but I have a point of order before we...
Okay, Mr. Green? Mr. Frida? Mr. Dalton? Mrs. Karen? Mr. Farmer? Mr. Douglas? Okay, so this is just gonna be a hand vote. Point of order.
And I may reveal that I don't know what I'm doing after six years by saying this, but did Brian's amendment change Article eleven? Or are we gonna vote on Article eleven after this so that there's two increases in funds?
No, he amended the article. So if his amendment goes through, it's gonna come out of the fund balance. If his amendment loses, it comes out of the general fund. That's the basic amendment.
If it's approved, the citizen's petition goes away.
If what is approved? Excuse... Ask the question again. I just... If we are changing... The amendment is changing how it gets funded. So if Mr. Farmer's amendment passes, the funding would come out of the fund balance. And if it passes, then we vote to accept it or not. If defeated, we then vote whether we accept the twenty or not, and it comes out of the general fund. So the First Amendment has to do with, shall, if we later pass the article, shall the money come out of the June thirtieth fund balance? That is the amendment.
Wait, what, is that June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven fund balance?
Yes.
No, I think it should be two thousand and eleven.
It is the June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
So it'll be funded this June, even though the money will be expended in two thousand and twelve.
That is correct. Okay.
You've gotta wait another sixteen months.
So the question is on the amendment. As many as are in favor of the amendment signify by raising your cards. Those opposed, the eyes have it, the amendment passes. We are now discussing the article as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert LeBrue, seventy-six Hall Road. We are mired in Article eleven. I've lost interest. I don't even care anymore. Let's just move the question and be done with it. I don't care how you vote.
All right, the question has been, Mr. Brue moved to move the question. As many as are in favor of moving the question signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it. Question is moved.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. There was, on the written article, it says twenty thousand. When the petitioner got up, he made reference to twenty-two-five. Can we just have some clarification on what amount we're voting on?
You meant the twenty. Yes.
I don't think I mentioned a specific amount.
Yeah, it's just changing the funding.
I asked for an amendment.
The original petitioner asked for twenty-two-five, and twenty is what's in the published materials. So I don't think it's clear what we're voting on here.
That's what we're voting on is twenty.
We're voting on the twenty. Because that's in the article. Okay, the vote now is on Article eleven, and we have five people who request that Article eleven, more than five, be taken by a ballot vote. Sure. Point of order.
Before we do it, go through what you're gonna do, my point, question is on clarification. We're gonna vote Article eleven as amended.
Correct.
And then, okay, we don't need to do a...
So it's Article... We are going to vote on Article eleven as amended, which basically says that we take twenty thousand dollars and we fund it out of the June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, fund balance.
Okay, I'm taking my name off for the secret ballot.
Okay, I'm gonna ask again. For the ballot question, Al is off. Mr. Brown? Off. Mr. Green? Off. Mr. Frida? Off. Mr. Dalton? Miss Karen? Mr. Farmer? Mr. Douglas? Okay, so we're just gonna take a hand ballot. As many as are in favor of Article eleven as amended signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, Article eleven as amended passes. Ms. Gaffney moves restricting reconsideration. Ms. Wagner seconds. As many as in favor of restricting reconsideration signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, reconsideration is restricted. And we move on now to Article twelve. Article twelve. Okay. Shall the voters of the town of Londonderry vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to fund the salary and benefits and other programs needed for the call firefighter program? If approved, the cost of running the program will become part of the annual operating budget in subsequent years. Do we have a petitioner to move the article? Mr. Carl moves the article. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Carl. Mr. Carl?
Again, thank you for attending and thank you for your previous vote. As I stated before, I've been a resident of Londonderry since nineteen eighty-seven. I've also been a call firefighter since nineteen ninety-one. Basically, for those of you who don't understand what a call firefighter is, it's basically a volunteer who gets a stipend every time we respond to a call or if we have training. Our call budget currently stands at twenty thousand dollars. As of this, as of last week or so, we've expended approximately seventeen thousand dollars of that budget. We get paid twice a year. We get paid in December and we get paid again in June. We get a stipend of eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour to respond, to help out our full-time firefighters whenever there's a need for more personnel. We were restricted a few years ago so we could keep the budget down, so we do not respond to in-home medical emergencies unless we're, could be one of the first ones on scene so we could take care of something. So our limits have been restricted over the years to try to keep the budget down. We currently have seven active members. We can, with the twenty thousand dollars, and that's why I requested the twenty thousand, again, I did not reduce that number because we are, had been approved by Chief McCaffrey to put on an additional three to four members. When we heard that we were gonna have a problem with the budget this year, we decided not to appoint those people. We have interviewed, we started the procedures for that, but we decided not to do that until we knew whether or not we actually had the support of the town. There's been talk of us becoming volunteers and doing the work for free. I do not have a problem with that. I'll be honest with you, my eleven dollars and fifty cents that I get when I respond to a call usually goes to cover my gas and expenses to get there and additional equipment that I put on myself that I choose to purchase on my own. I run the car seat program in town, for those of you who've had the opportunity to do that, and with my fellow call firefighters, we run that program. We also put on Safety Day over at Moose Hills, over at Matthew Thornton School with the help of the Moose Hill PTA. We help out at Open House. We're here to help out our full-time firefighters. Gone are the days when all the firefighters live in town. Approximately half of your firefighters live outside of town. We all live in town. We have two call firefighters who do not live in town. One is our staff photographer. One is a call firefighter who, when he first was assigned to the department, lived in town. He's since moved to Derry but is still within the proximity that we set up so he could respond to the calls in the town. For eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour, we do almost the same things that those guys do. We're there with that extra set of hands that they need, whether it be at a motor vehicle crash and we're trying to get, to perform extrications, whether we're setting up rehab so these guys, when they come out of the fire, have some juices and some drinks and some food to eat while they're doing their rehab. I strongly support this. I've been a member since nineteen ninety-one. I enjoy what I do. I would not mind doing it on a volunteer basis. However, if that happened, it would cost me right now a minimum of five hundred dollars in order for me to renew my certification as an EMT. This money has not been appropriated in the budget. That line item, just like we talked about with the gear, has been zeroed out. There are expenses that the town needs to incur in order to keep us on even as volunteers, and that hasn't been discussed with us. I strongly support your... I request your support on this question, and I'm up for any discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Brown from the town council.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And Vinnie's a neighbor of mine, so hopefully, when this is all said and done, regardless of what the decision is, we'll continue to respect each other, and I know we will. Again, this is likely to be somewhat emotional in terms of the fact that it's related to public safety. And once again, I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but we tasked the town manager with a goal. He worked with his department heads who are the professionals. The chief came back to us and said, at the end of the day, this is one of those services that we are going to not fund going forward so that we can meet that goal. The majority of the council and budget committee agreed with that. And it's important to note that during that timeframe, we did ask the town manager and the chief to confirm that there was no restrictions, no state statutes, no bargaining agreements, no insurance restrictions that would preclude these seven or nine individuals, should they be so inclined to continue to perform those duties as a volunteer. The answer was yes. So yes, there are volunteer firefighters and volunteer fire departments, and there can be volunteer call firefighters in town if they so choose to move forward. We asked the town, the town manager and the chief, would you welcome these volunteers? And they said absolutely. So there's no restriction legally, there's no restriction in terms of us wanting them to continue to do this, and there's nothing in any contract that says they can't. And then more importantly, we said, would they be covered for workers' compensation and general liability? And the answer's yes. So it appeared that all of the hurdles that you normally would face for someone serving the town in a volunteer capacity were removed. It has been stated that removing the funding eliminates the call firefighters. Semantics or not, it doesn't. It falls to a personal choice of those individuals as to whether they wanna go along. One of the things, and I'm gonna ask you to bear with me, one of the things that this town has done well is we have groups of people who coalesce and come together to volunteer and provide their time, their skills, their energy, at a personal cost as well. The Alert team is one such model. So I wanted, before we vote, I wanna just throw out that I individually looked at this decision along those lines. We have fifty-seven Alert members in town. Approximately thirty-five of those volunteer on an active basis. They're one hundred percent volunteer-based. There's no taxpayer funding requested by their activities. They support themselves financially through fundraising and donations, that's their supplies, their equipment, et cetera. They actively apply for grants, okay? Their members train approximately forty hours a year on their own dime. They do CPR, first aid, search and rescue, survival, traffic safety, ice rescue, the list goes on. All of those costs are absorbed by the individual members or the organization itself through their fundraising. Their equipment costs approximately two hundred and fifty dollars per volunteer per year on their own dime. Their core mission is to supplement Londonderry's public first, public safety first responders in times of need. In addition, they've also performed community-based activities. I'm not doing this to throw Alert in the face of the call firefighters. I am not. And I'm not doing this to, because I'm a member of Alert, I'm not. I'm just saying that there's a model out there that this seems to fit very well. And yes, we decided to remove the funding, and you'll vote one way or the other. But I wanted to throw that out there, that if there is a way to provide services on a volunteer basis, this appears to be one of those. And I'd like you to consider that as one counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, and then I'll go to the Budget Committee.
In looking at this article, I am the counselor who did support it, and I strictly looked at it from a standpoint of dollars and cents. I asked the chief, what are we going to incur in overtime without the call firefighters? Tells me it's gonna be five thousand dollars. At thirty-five dollars an hour, that's one hundred and forty-two hours. We spent seventeen thousand five hundred dollars last year in call firefighters. That's one thousand five hundred and seventy-one hours. So we're gonna do without fourteen hundred hours. Whether they volunteer or not, that's a choice. We are told by surrounding communities that we are pressing on the mutual aid capacities of other communities. We were told directly by a counselor in Derry that we call them more than they call us and it's starting to press on their needs. These gentlemen offer a valuable service in this community. The cost of fourteen hundred hours of overtime is fifty thousand dollars. I'd like you to take into consideration the dollars and cents numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the Budget Committee, Mr. Oswald?
The Budget Committee has a vote of two to five against this article.
Thank you. Mr. Carson?
Very good, Mr. Lincoln. Having volunteers, you know, is important. And I understand, you know, having been a part of the Rotary Club that actually funded Alert and that, and it's great and interesting to do that. But let's face it, the folks on Alert don't do what firefighters do. They don't do what call firefighters do. They do something more. You know, they go into buildings that are on fire. Alert people clear the way so that the roads are open or they... Alert people clear the way so that the roads are open, or they do some search and rescue, you know, inside the boundaries of the town. I mean, it's not that big a town to get lost in. You know, we just voted, I don't know, it seems like forever, but about 30 minutes ago on the previous article with the clothing. I mean, I think that a very wise amendment was made to that article, which used this year's fund balance to actually fund the article itself. I think, keeping with the intent of having a zero-funded, you know, budget for next year, we should amend this article as the previous article and use this year's fund balance. Unless the town manager can says that, you know, we, after spending 20,000 out of the fund balance for this year, we're not gonna have that extra 20,000. I, I think barring that, I'd like to go ahead and move that we amend this article using the same language in the previous article, so that the article is funded with FY11 fund balance.
Okay, so let me say it. So we're going to add, and we have a second. So the motion been made and a second, and the motion is to add the, the words-
Just substitute the language from the last article, so we are-
I'm gonna read the words.
Yeah.
And the words are going to be, "And to authorize the use of the June 30th, 2011 fund balance for this purpose."
Correct.
That is the amendment, and we have a second, and the amendment is now on the floor.
And I'd like to speak to the amendment?
Okay.
I mean, again, this is a no-brainer. We just did this, you know, 20 or 30 minutes ago. The Town Council gets, and we all get, you know, a zero-balance budget for, you know, 2012. You know, we get this money funded so that we don't lose our, our call firefighters. We already heard Counselor Farrell say, you know, if we use overtime, it's gonna cost us twice as much. I mean, again, this is one of those no-brainer items, so I, please support that amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Carl.
Peter Carl, 105 Adams Road, not to be confused with my brother in High Range. I should let him do the amendment the first time, I think it would've passed. But anyways, let me give you an example of what we're talking about. I'm gonna give you an example where I was over at my brother's house one night, and we're outside talking, and he sees, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were-
No, no, Karen.
And, and we're talking, and he sees a big glow and a woman scream, okay? In about two seconds, he's gone. He has his wife calling Lunenary Fire. He's at the house on Carousel in about 20 seconds. Now, it was a false alarm. It was a false alarm. But, but he was there on scene to, in case that something happened. Now, let's suppose, 'cause you pay, you pay for fire, what if, or when if? What if the fire did explode and the woman's face did get charred? Or what if it did catch on the shingles of the, of the house? In 15 to 20 seconds, you've got a certified firefighter on scene who, in addition, is calling back to dispatch, explaining what the situation is. So when the apparatus arrives, they don't spend time assessing the incident. They know what the incident is, and they, and they, and they go right to work. This is what the call firefighters are there. If you're lucky to have one who live in your area, this is what they do. Time is precious. Seconds count. And if these people are there ahead of the apparatus, they, they can, they, they start work, they provide the situation, and, and, and work when the professionals arrive, go on. $20,000 for that kind of service, when, as Counsel Farrell has already mentioned, your staffing is at, at a critical point where mutual aid from one of our sister towns is in jeopardy. I think this is a no-brainer. I ask you to support it.
And Mr. DiMarco, on the article as amended, as the amend, on the amendment?
No, just, what I wanna bring up was the point of order. So you had, you had an amendment, and then a second, and then you went back to discussion on the original article.
Of the amendment.
So now we're talking, I just wanna make it clear-
It's the article, it is, we are voting on the amendment.
Okay, so people should direct their comments towards the amendment.
To the amendment.
They'll have the opportunity towards going back to the article once the amendment clears.
Okay.
Unless the amendment passes, and then the article is moved. No?
If the amendment passes, it's-
No, if the amendment passes, it's-
We go back to the article and vote on it as amended.
As amended, yes.
Okay. So we're on the amendment, is whether we do it the funded way or we do it the budget way.
Right. And I would like to call the question, and I'd like to give you a point of order.
There's a person behind you, and I'm not allowed to do that.
No. What you are allowed to do is restrict the number of people, get up behind me.
Uh, no, according to, I'm, I asked Mr. Baldessaro that question, and-
It was whoever's in line when the question is called.
You're only calling.
Right.
That's not what you said, actually.
Okay, that, said a different way, but that's fine. Okay.
Okay.
Go, yep. Move the question.
There are other people who wanna speak on the actual article too, still, so.
So this is just the amendment?
This is just on the amendment. I was speaking with Mr. Bouchard, and he tells me that I'm mistaking, but I don't understand how we're using a one-time fund balance to fund this. It's going to come up again next year, and the council could theoretically cut it first next year. Actually, it's not even funded at all at this point if we use this.
Okay.
It is not funded next year at all if we use this balance. Do we have to rely on the council to put it back in next year? Like somebody said earlier, this is less than the cost of a Happy Meal for people to go into burning buildings. It's a no-brainer.
Okay. Now, the motion been made to move the question on this amendment. As many as are in favor of moving the question signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, the question is now on the amendment. Do I need to take a ballot vote because I have something in writing? Mr. Farmer? I mean, Mr. Brown?
No, I'm all set, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Baldessaro?
Yes.
All right. We don't need a, we do not need a ballot vote on whether it's funded or not, whether it's the fund balance or not. Okay. So we do not need to have the written ballot. As many as are in favor of the amendment, which is to add the words, authorize the use of the June 30th, 2011 fund balance for this purpose. Many of us are in favor, signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, the amendment passes. We are now discussing the article-
As amended.
As amended.
Martin Suge, 17 Wimbledon Drive. Again, these are too low. Again, the, we're doing something, as Chris just said, funding something from, that's not built into the budget. If we need to call firefighters, then we need them. And again, I go back to the department head being responsible for his department and saying, this is what I need, rock bottom. A lot of the folks who are speaking here, some may have shown up at the budget hearings when we had them passed in November, but I suspect a lot have not. And so that was the time to discuss this need, but I just don't like this idea of funding these programs from the undesignated fund at the end of the year. This should be built into the budget, and it should be a line item. But if the chief and the folks, the Town Council and Budget, again, agree with it, they've looked into this very detailed. Again, we voted for these people to do this, to spend a lot of time and attention to the detail that, you know, here, some people are hearing this for the first time. So again, I'm gonna trust the Town Council and the Budget Committee and the chief on what they say that they'll be able to do this.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Carrie Nagle, I'm from 28 Rain Tree Drive, and I just wanted to say, one of the, sorry, one of the things that is funded through them is the car seat program, and I just want everyone to know, I was in an accident on January 24th, and my two-year-old son was in the car with me, and my car was totaled, and I caused $1,000 of damage to a Ford van, and I had a Chevy Cavalier, just to hear the significance. My son walked away fine. When I went to ask him how he was doing, he goes, mommy had an accident. He had no injuries to him, nothing was hurt because his car seat was installed properly. Had we not gone through that program, his car seat would not have been installed properly. And if people have tried to install car seats on their own, you don't have any idea what they're, they entail these days. So I just wanna make sure that the car seat program is funded through the call firefighters and that we keep Articles, or that we vote yes for Article 12 to help prevent injuries to other kids and babies with the car seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bouchard.
Dan Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive. I just wanna point out one thing, that I believe we've had like 15 of our full-time firefighters come through our call firefighter program, and they've received a lot of training. I don't believe that it's right for us as taxpayers, as Mr. Carl, to pay $500 out of his own pocket to continue this training and volunteer. One thing I did point out to Chris is that, yeah, we're gonna approve, if we approve this, it's not in next year's budget, but it's also sending a clear message to the council saying, people want this program. Okay? So look somewhere else to cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carson.
I just want to mention one thing in regards to people talking about how we're funding this, you know, that we're funding it out of, you know, this year's budget, and next year we're gonna have to do something. I'd just like to remind everybody that Article 12 is the last article Town Meeting will ever have. This is the last vote we'll ever take, you know, when we come, because next year, we'll be using a completely different process and a deliberative session in voting at a ballot box. So this will be the last time we get to be, we get up here and actually amend an article, vote on an article, discuss this amongst the group in a, in a finality that we'll never have again. So please vote and approve this article. Thank you.
And as a follow-up to that, just as a bit of history, I believe this is the 289th year of having a, a Town Meeting, and with this vote we're gonna take in a minute or two, it ends an era.
And so I will call the question.
So as many as are in favor of moving the question signify by raising the cards. Those opposed, the questions move. We now go to vote on the article. Do I need a ballot, gentlemen? You want a ballot on this?
No.
What, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask five. Al, do we need a ballot?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
As the last article, yes.
All right. Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Frida?
It's almost over, this is it.
Mr. Dalton?
No.
Mrs. Courier?
No.
Mr. Farmer?
No.
And Mr. Douglas isn't here. We do not have a ballot on this. Democracy once again was at work. So as many, in this historical moment, as many as are in favor of Article 12 as amended, signify by raising your cards. Those opposed, eyes have it, Article 12 as amendment, as amended passes. I recognize the dean to speak.
I trust that's me.
Yep.
Well, there were 230 of you that came to the last, temporarily, the last Town Meeting. Believe me, if I'm still around, it'll be very temporary, 'cause none of you realize what's going to go on in the next year. I'm on the, you're next.